All right. David, are you good? Chris, you're good? No, Ann tonight? Okay. Good evening, everybody. We will bring this meeting to order. It is 7:05. Apologies for the late start. It is our regularly scheduled Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting. It's December 9th. We'll start with a roll call, please. I can't do it.
Yes, Member Leister.
Here.
Member Vendur. Then, Member Handley.
Here.
Member Cassal McNally.
Here.
Member Nielsen.
Here.
Member Haller. Chair Bradley.
I am here. Agenda item two is the approval of minutes. Copy that on November 11th, regular meeting minutes was included in our packet. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Member McNally, do I have a second?
Second.
Member Nielsen, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Agenda item three is Community Development Report. David?
No report this evening.
No report, thank you. We'll move on then to our substantive cases for this evening. We are going to reopen the public hearing so that we can usher in a continuation of case number 2408 SU, otherwise known as 225 Sheridan Road, Centennial Park and Beach Project. Yes?
We can't hear.
The applicant is, the attorney for the Centennial, for the Oneeka Park District is volunteering to wait until we do the 780 Prospect Avenue application.
Can I agree with that?
Okay. I would entertain a motion to, I would entertain a motion to adjust tonight's schedule to allow for 780 Prospect Avenue to be heard in advance of the Centennial Park Project.
So moved.
Second.
Member Nielsen, second by Member McNally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We will hear 1780 Prospect Avenue as the first item of business and then move on to agenda item 225 Sheridan Road.
I'll go first.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this is a, an application?
For the record, this, this is a zoning request to allow the construction of a one-story addition at that residence. Requested variation would permit us to allow the, allow the applicant to exceed the maximum permitted gross floor area. We have final jurisdiction on this request. We'll turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Okay, so the subject property is at 780 Prospect Avenue. It's a request for a standard variation to increase the maximum permitted gross floor area. Final approval is for ZBA. This property is located on the, what you could call the southwest corner of Prospect Avenue and Summit Street, towards that intersection. It's zoned R3, single-family residential, and surrounded by R3 on all three directions except the northwest, across the street on Summit Street where it's zoned R4. The property contains a single-family home with a detached garage. The principal structure is legally non-conforming in that slightly encroaches into the required corner yard setback towards Summit Street by about 2.16 feet. These are current photos of the front facade of the house facing the northwest along Prospect Avenue and then the side of the house facing the southwest along Summit Street. You can also see the garage in the corner there. The picture on the left is a photo of the rear facade that faces the southeast and then the picture on the right is sort of an overall view of the house's rear elevation and backyard where the addition would be, is proposed to be located. Viewed from Summit Street, kind of looking towards the north, the proposed addition would be, as I mentioned, towards the rear of the house where the current rear entrance is located. The variation is being requested to construct a one-story addition, which is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. It's kind of a little difficult to see, so it's blown up a little bit on the right. It would require with all required setbacks for the property, but it would be set back 32.48 feet from the property line along the corner yard along Summit Street. The proposed addition would need zoning relief because the gross floor area zoning requirement, the proposed addition would put the house at approximately 5,106.99 square feet, which is 301.68 square feet over the maximum permitted gross floor area, also known as GFA, of 4,802.31 square feet. It should be noted that the existing house is also non-conforming in that it exceeds maximum permitted GFA by 142.78 square feet. This is an excerpt of the proposed architectural plan showing the proposed addition's dimensions and appearance. The applicant states that the addition would be to create a mudroom and extend the rear These are excerpts of the architectural plan showing the proposed elevation renderings from the side as it would look along Summit Street and then towards the rear elevation, highlighted in yellow, obviously. So at that, you'll see the resolutions attached that are drafted for the board's considerations, one approving the request while the other denies the request. After hearing from the applicant and the public, a member may wish to make a motion to adopt either resolution. Staff received one comment from the public regarding this application. That's attachment E in page 466 of the agenda packet. Did the board have any questions for staff?
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
The applicant has a chance to speak.
Okay. No, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is the applicant or its representatives here tonight? Please come forward. We'll swear you in.
Hello.
Hi. Raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
You promised the testimony you'll give tonight to this board shall be the truth?
Yes.
And your name, please, for the record?
Ellen Whitehead.
And your role in the project?
I'm the architect.
Thank you so much for being here. Floor is yours if you'd like to give us a little more context on the project, otherwise we can go into questions.
Awesome. Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Ellen Whitehead. I'm the owner and architect of Do Design Company and I'm working with homeowners Sarah and Chris Martinez. Sarah and Chris purchased their home in 2019 and are committed to improving their historic property into a family home that they can grow into. As Chris mentioned, this property is located on the corner of Summit and Prospect. The property is existing non-conforming along the corner yard setback and the minimum lot area. The lot is undersized for the zoning district by 1,847.37 square feet. The house was built in the early 1900s and has had several additions over time by various owners. We are requesting an increase in allowable gross floor area to add a 159-square-foot mudroom addition at the rear of the home. The house, as large as it is, has very little practical storage on the first floor. The main family entry is from the parking area, the garage and the driveway that you saw in the photos, which is at the southwest side of the house. This entrance brings you right into the living space, which is the kitchen and the dining room and family rooms. Adding a mudroom to this in-between space kind of cuts off the vital connection between the existing living space. We would like to add a mudroom, cleaning storage, coat storage, et cetera, which are vital to present-day family homes and is missing from this very traditional center-entry layout. With a small addition, we are able to add this much-needed storage at the natural family entrance. We are using some of the home's existing footprint for the mudroom space without compromising the connection between the existing living space. We appreciate your time and consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any members up here have questions for the applicant? Applicant's representative, sorry. No?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any members of the public here tonight wish to give comment on this application, this one? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it in for deliberation. Okay. Fairly straightforward. Anyone want to start us off first with their thoughts?
I'm happy to.
Thanks, Kate.
So, I'm in favor of this proposal. I appreciate that this is at the rear of the property and would keep the existing look and feel of the structure, kind of giving it a more modern, you know, what the, what a family would need. I know that, as we often say, a mudroom is not a matter of right in Oneeka, but it is, you know, in terms of this structure, I think that it would increase the livability. I feel this is a reasonable ask, addresses the need of a modern family in this 115-ish year-old home. And I applaud the homeowners for looking to update a beautiful historic home opposed to doing something more drastic. I was also appreciative of Ms. Quinn's public comment in attachment E, so this is a yes for me.
Great. Thanks, Kate. Mark, I think you're ready to speak.
I don't know that I have anything else to add. I agree with.
Mike on, thanks?
I agree, agree with Kate. I think it's a reasonable ask. It's a little over 3%. I think it's well situated on the property and no neighbor objections. I think it's a reasonable ask.
Anybody else over here want to give their thoughts?
I'll, I'll just concur with what others have said. I feel like it's extremely a small ask, leveraging the existing footprint in a, in a thoughtful way. And I understand the, the nature of the request given all that was laid out.
Todd?
I don't, no issues with it either. Is this on?
Yeah, no issues. No question. Lynn?
No, I, I'm not sure I necessarily agree that it's a slam dunk. I, I know it's a small ask, but it is a very large house on a small lot. And I don't really see where it meets the standards for a, you know, it certainly doesn't meet the, the first standard. So, you know, I'm a little hesitant, but I'm not gonna, I, I, well, I'll just leave it at that, at the moment, and see where the rest of it goes.
Okay. Mike?
I'm with, I'm with Lynn, kind of in the way of typically her words, big house, small lot. And I don't, I don't think the ask is huge, but the, yeah, the first, it's hard to, it's hard to meet on something like this, but it's also not a really huge ask, so I'm a little at the indifferent stage right now. Probably not to say more, but to be in lines with Lynn.
Okay. I'll say for my part, projects like this are often difficult. Where'd you go? There you go. Okay, sorry. Projects like this are often difficult to, to meet out, given, you know, it is a small ask and yet it is already existing non-conforming. It relates to the GFA. It is existing non-conforming by way of its lot dimensions and I do think the uniqueness of that ought to be taken slightly into consideration. If it were, you know, otherwise a legally conforming lot, we would have a lot more square footage to play with. This request wouldn't even be before the zoning board because they'd have ample square footage, as they do right now, under the, under the roof lot coverage as well as the impermeable lot surface. So, you know, the factor here always is the reasonable return, not the maximum return. Mudrooms are a nice but not an essential aspect in, in homes. We often have to explain that to folks that just because we want these doesn't mean that we're required to, to have them. The fact that the property was already, has already undergone some renovation by the current owner, including a minor garage project, as I understand it, you know, invites in me a consideration as to why this wasn't collectively done at that same time. You know, we don't like projects where we're granting relief project by project. Those can be frustrating for us up here when we don't have the totality of what might be contemplated on a, on a site, particularly one as unique as this. So the first standard is always going to be the one that, that is difficult to fully satisfy from any, from any project site. I do think going for it, though, is the uniqueness of the lot size and that it probably ought not be zoned particularly the way it is right now, just given the hindrance that it's putting on the property. So, given the minimal ask, they didn't, you know, ask to build a mudroom with a widescreen TV and, you know, everything you can imagine to put under some of the mudrooms we've seen. I'm inclined to, to recommend approval here and given that I already have four in that way, I'll absolve Member Handley and Member Nielsen from needing to make that determination to entertain a motion to recommend approval.
Just for point of clarification, you have final jurisdiction, so you will be actually granting the variation?
Oh, sorry. This is not a re- I'm just so used to recommending. You actually have, we actually have power today. A motion to approve, as included in our packet, sorry. That's Member Haller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member McNally, roll call vote, please. It's just never you.
I'm filling in for Ann tonight. You're in trouble. Member Leister?
Yes.
Member Vendur?
Yes.
Member Handley?
No.
Member Cassal McNally?
Yes.
Member Nielsen?
Yes.
Member Haller? Chair Bradley?
Yes, by my account, the motion carries. Congratulations with your project. That's a, you. Okay. Appreciate everybody and the applicant for our agenda toggle there, but we'll move then on to case number 2408 SU, 225 Sheridan Road, otherwise known as Centennial Park and Beach Project. This is a continuation of a public hearing from our November 11th meeting, as everybody knows, but we'll recap. This is a approval of a special use permit to allow the construction of existing, construction to allow the improvements on the existing park and beach, zoning variations to allow fences and walls to exceed the maximum permitted height, steep slope exceptions to allow walkways, retaining walls, steps and seating areas within the steep slope. We are recommending body on this. And with that, I'll turn it over. Oh, sure. Sorry. So, in advance of this and to save everybody some time, anybody who intends to give public testimony tonight, would you please rise? Raise your right hand with a nice voice. Do you promise that the testimony you'll give tonight to this board shall be the truth?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. With that, we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. Just quickly, a review prior to hearing from the Park District. I would like to briefly summarize the November 11th ZBA meeting and the requested relief. At the November meeting, after hearing from village staff, the Park District and the public, ZBA members asked the applicant questions and then discussed the application. After the board's discussion and deliberations, the chair asked the Park District if they would like the ZBA to proceed with a vote that evening or would like time to respond to comments and questions from the board and the public. After hearing from the Park District, they would like an opportunity to respond to comments. The board took two actions, directed staff and the village attorney to prepare findings and recommendations regarding the variations and exceptions that the board was considering and to consider that at a future meeting. And then the board continued the public hearing to, this evening, to provide the Park District an opportunity to respond to the comments and questions. Based on conversation staff had with the Park District prior to the preparation of the staff agenda and materials, the applicant had chosen not to provide a written response to comments and questions from the November 11th meeting. Rather, the applicant has, had indicated that they plan to respond to those comments and questions at this evening's meeting. I will briefly highlight the requested relief once more to allow the proposed improvements. And the first is the special use, which is required when making significant alterations to a, an existing park and beach. Also, at the October, November meetings, the board reviewed and considered the necessary fence and wall height variations within the required front yards, yard along the lake. Those are shown here. And then also at the previous meetings, the board also reviewed and discussed the steep slope exceptions for the 10-foot-wide walkway that goes down the steep slope, the six-foot-wide outcropping stairs and the reconfigured mid bluff walkway and seating area, both which are within the steep slope zone. So after hearing from the pub, Park, I'm sorry, after hearing from the Park District and the public this evening, the board may choose forward with one or more of the following options. One, continue the public hearing to a date certain to provide time for the applicant or staff to address questions or comments. Move to recommend approval of findings and recommendations for the variations and exceptions. A draft motion can be found on page, pages 20 through 25 of the agenda packet. And you also may move to recommend approval or denial of the special use requests. The village attorney has available written findings and recommendations for the board to recommend either approval or denial. Before we turn it over to the Park District, do you have any questions for the village attorney or staff?
Anybody? Any of my colleagues have questions for staff or the attorney? Thank you so much, David. The applicant, the applicant's representatives are here tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and thank you for the opportunity to address you again today. My name is Christina Cotto. I'm the president of the Oneeka Park District Board of Commissioners. This is our third meeting where we have had the privilege of presenting details on the Centennial Park and Beach Project. We greatly appreciate the board's continued attention and engagement as we work together to refine this important project for our community. Tonight, we'll be focusing on several key aspects of the project that have emerged as areas of interest and concern during our previous discussions. Specifically, we will be reviewing the design of the new pier, ensuring that it meets both engineering and safety standards, ensuring the safety of our pier, particularly with regard to access and usage, addressing parking and traffic concerns that might arise from the project and how we plan to manage those effectively, updates to restroom facilities, ensuring that they are both functional and accessible in the interim, the pedestrian bypass and how we plan on addressing this concern, and finally, beach closure and signage, ensuring clear and concise communication with the public about closures and other important information. We value your input on these matters and are committed to addressing the concerns of the community. We know that this project holds great significance for the residents of Oneeka and we are dedicated to delivering a project that serves our community for generations to come. Thank you again for your time and consideration. We look forward to your feedback and support as we continue through the special use permit process. I would like to introduce the talented staff and consultants here tonight. Shannon Nizal, Executive Director of the Oneeka Park District. Costa Cotulas, Director of Parks and Maintenance. Morgan Chapman, from the Lakota Group. Bill Loftus, from Spaceco Engineering. Peter Lemon, from Kim Lee Horn. And Adam Simon, Oneeka Park District Attorney, from Ansel Glink. Costa?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Costa Cotulas and I'm the Director of Parks and Maintenance for the Oneeka Park District. Have the opportunity now, a few times, to stand in front of you and kind of talk through our plan design, both for all different levels of that, the zoning variance, the, or the front yard setback, the exemptions that we requested for the steep slope, as well as the safety sta, or the special use standards. This evening, we want to take a, one step further and kind of review those agenda items as listed here in the presentation to talk through the proposed design, the pier design, pier safety, public and traffic, excuse me, parking and traffic, public restrooms and pedestrian bypass, as we heard from the last zoning meeting. Overview of that for this evening, through the pier design, we're going to talk about how the design reduces riptides, prevents lakebed downcutting and the concerns that go along with that with long-term erosion issues and safety concerns, along with improved access for Lake Michigan. Along with pier safety, we want to identify the monitored swim zones, how they're, how they're going to be utilized and reviewed and maintained, or, excuse me, discourages, the design, how it discourages diving and access to the water in inappropriate ways and also reduces riptides. Parking and traffic, we heard you loud and clear. We had the opportunity to bring in a third party to help us with a more thorough review of that or of our findings. Peter Lemon from Kimberly Horn will be presenting on that for us this evening as well. Restrooms was another topic of discussion that came up. We'll be talking through that at a high level, as well as the pedestrian bypass and the concerns around that and different options that we can do to address that concern, working with the property, the adjacent property owner, as well as modifying the fence as needed to accommodate those needs. Last but not least, we also want to identify beach closures, signage and gates as identified through one of the requirements through the special use. That was noted in there through James Burnall and Community Development Director David Shune on how to address those concerns and that's going to be, we plan on, something that will be addressed through the permitting process. And lastly, the, or pier handrail and the overall overarching discussions we had on that, potentially adding that to the site for the entire pier instead of just the southern edge, but include that all the way around. I would just like to note that any of these changes can't be brought forward by Park District staff. They'll have to be reviewed, whatever the findings are from the zoning board meeting and reviewed with the Park Board for ultimately an approval through that, that board approval. So just wanted to make note of that as we discuss and review tonight. Up on the screen and in front of you is the plan design rendering. Once again, there hasn't been any changes to the plan review rendering. We just want to bring this up on the screen. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time to labor through this, but once again, the portion to the left, on the left side of the pier, is going to be the public swimming area. The area to the right is the off-leash dog park area, or dog beach, excuse me, along with the center pier with armor stone surround, boardwalk as you work perpendicular, excuse me, work perpendicular back towards the shoreline and parallel to the shoreline along with the access ramps and staircases to those amenities. From there, there is a switchback staircase that takes you up to the mid bluff level, as, mid bluff level, as well as the ADA accessible ramp that we had indicated previously. There are still the elements of the mid bluff paver area, as well as the outcropping stones as well. The plan is staying, or has stayed as proposed with no large design comments or changes at this point in time. Going through the pier design, once again, the focus and the basis of our design was, of course, the coastal engineering based on that information. The information that we heard from the public and what we took through the initial plan design to what we did with completed open houses to where we're at today. Two of the standing founding members of that is the lakebed downcutting and latoral drift that causes the concerns and the, one of the major reasons that we have chosen to put this element in. The lakebed downcutting and the latoral drift is the, the erosion of the clay lakebed layer when you have high lake levels and you have erosion concerns. The lakebed, here, here's a better slide to show that exhibit, causes the erosion of the clay layer, which in turn is irreplaceable. Once that gets more near shore with a higher wave activity, you have that erosion and that downcutting and in turn you have deeper shorelines with less sand. Also on this image, as I noted, was the latoral drift. Latoral drift is the movement of sand or migration of sand from north to south as it is in Lake Michigan. Identified here on the, or the image to the right of the screen, apologize, I know it's a little hard to read, but basically this is summarizing what is received typically on the annual basis coming from, from Wisconsin down, is approximately 225 cubic yards of sand on a yearly basis. Through that, there are obstructions north of Oneeka that pull a lot of those sands out or push them into deeper water because of the size of those structures. Some of those structures are Waukegan Harbor, the Great Lakes Naval Training Center and so forth. As you can see, the funnel effect or the hourglass effect here, from the 225 as it's shown here dwindles down to about 14,000 cubic yards that actually migrate south. So we want to make sure that the, the board commission here has an understanding of the, the founding drive of why the pier structure is important, along with the armor stone surround. The armor stone surround breaks that kinetic energy as we have it now proposed versus what we have now in place where we have the steel groins. The steel groins are more reflective in nature. The steel groins are more reflective in nature and allow for the, or the wave activity to kind of pull into shore instead of breaking up and dispersing that as it hits those stone structures. So that's one of the drivers. The other one, as I mentioned, is the latoral drift. The size of our breakwater as we're, excuse me, our pier element as proposed is no greater in length than what we've seen previously, whether you're looking at Maple and the 235 structure that's there, or when you look at Elder Lane as it's specifically set to where the steel groins are currently, it doesn't proceed out any further than those obstructions are currently. Here's some latoral barriers that are existing in the lake. This is one showing example of Kennelworth Beach. In the lower left, you'll see an example here from Google Earth showing 2013 and the amount of sand near the, near the all-time low lake level. As you proceed up to the top right, you'll see in 2015, the sand nourishment and how that has depleted. And then in 2020, near the all-time lake high, you'll see just how much beach was left. You can see in those images, the steel structures that pull that and the reflective energy that pulls that sand out. Here's another example showing Glencoe Beach in the top two images. Once again, the top image on the top left is from 2013, and the image on the top right is from 2023, showing the push of sand and how it moves throughout the system. Here, you can see that this beach has been sustained through that, that activity and where it exists today. And then the lower two images are those of Maple Street Beach. Once again, another Park District property. The lower left, you'll see a 2013 image showing when we were near the late time low, and you'll see the amount of sand that has collected on the north side there. And then in the lower right, you'll see 10 years later in 2023, as the, near all-time highs start to get, or started to reduce in lake level, just the amount of sand that was pulled out and pushed out of the system. Once again, being mindful of the reflective energy in those as we have it proposed in our current design for Centennial and how our design is taking those considerations into our process. Here is some images of the cross-sections of the pier. I know one of the things that was talked about as opportunities from the ZBA last time was the size, scale, and length of the pier and consideration for that. I will assure you, the size and scale that's being proposed here is more than appropriate for the site. Shannon Nizal will read an excerpt from a design letter here in a moment from our coastal engineer, but I'd like to point out in this image here, the key map and what it's showing. The image in the upper right is a cross-section of the pier, in the middle of the pier. You'll see the width of the pier and how it's, how it's set, along with the width of the breakwater, excuse me, the armor stone surround. The armor stone surround is set in a, in a form where it's a one and a half to one ratio to allow for the design to be able to hold and break that energy. The lower image of that, where you can see the cross-section cut, you can see the sand layer in the light tan, and then the clay layer in the darker brown. The clay layer and the way that these structures are set is there is what's called a bedding stone that is dug into the base clay layer, establishing the foundation to build the stone off of. And then from there, there's B stone, and then ultimately armor stone that's built in for the surrounds to build out the structure itself. So when you look at this and you see the cross-section, you get a sense of just how much of the stone is actually going to be shown and how much of it's actually going to be submerged. There was questions and concerns around swim zones. We'll address that in a little bit further in the presentation, but I wanted to point out here just the size and the scale of what these structures are. A lot of people are anticipating these, they're saying 80 feet and so forth in width. That might be true toe-to-toe, but that's buried in the stone, or buried in the lakebed, but what you're actually going to see is probably more like 15 feet plus about five to 10 feet on either side, depending on the lake level. So just something else to consider as far as that fluctuation of the lake levels and how that works. Shannon, if I can invite you up to talk through our design statement from our coastal engineer.
Good evening. Shannon Nizal, Executive Director of the Winnetka Park District. So we received a design statement from Red Barn Design and Engineering, who is our coastal engineer and engineer of record on the project. So design statement, site improvement, Centennial Park and Beach Project. The design elements and project components and project documents for the Centennial Park and Beach site have been prepared and under the direction of the Winnetka Park District. These documents were prepared in accordance with current state and federal codes, regulations, and industry standards for site improvement projects along the Great Lakes shoreline. The projects incorporate elements that reflect a balance of environmental sustainability and industry standard engineering while being responsive to community feedback. These elements combine with input received from local stakeholders, and the requirements outlined in the village's amended lakefront construction ordinance have shaped the project design now presented for special use permitting for Centennial Park and Beach. A key feature of the proposed design is the new pier structure, which features a steel sheet pile core bordered by a rubble mound revetment structure. This structure serves as an important, over the existing steel, serves an important over the existing steel groin as it relates to reduction of any existing rip currents currently experienced along the steel groin while performing additional sand retention and seasonal accretion at the beach areas. These improvements provide enhanced public space at the park beachfront. The pier's length and width were carefully selected to ensure it provides the right scale for the site while achieving vital environmental goals. The crest elevations of both the pier core and rubble mound revetment were selected to follow the village's lakefront ordinance while adhering to the principle of minimum intervention necessary to fulfill these objectives. The chosen length of the pier aligns with the dimensions of other piers along the Winnetka shoreline, ensuring consistency with the area's existing shoreline improvements. This thoughtful consideration allows the design to blend harmoniously with the surrounding environment while enhancing the functionality of the beach. The project documents were prepared by collaborative team including the Winnetka Park District, Red Barn Design and Engineering, the Lakota Group, Spaceco Incorporated, Shabigan Associates, and Christopher Burke Engineering. Documents for state and federal permitting and project documents for bidding and construction have been prepared as a part of this coordinated effort. This has been provided to the ZBA in paper form and, I believe it was?
Yes.
Yes, and, and also through electronic means as well.
Shannon, thank you. Wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to, to read or to listen to that statement, because that's a key piece in our design intent and what we put forward with this project. Once again, what is minimally necessary to achieve our goal. We want to make sure that our designs balances the environmental sustainability and the standards for engineering, as much as each of those standards that the regulatory agencies will review and, and make sure that they're built within accordance of. So that's to make the basic understanding that we wanted to make sure that our, our design is built to those standards and those expectations for a public entity. And that's the key thing here is we're looking to build a public beach. We're not building residential, we're building public. Pier safety, like to talk about the improved public amenity, as well as the training in different operations. Once again, you're going to hear a little bit of a crossover to the things that were driving standards for the principal design for the pier, because those in turn are built off the safety guidance and what we need to make sure that the structure is safe for the community. So please bear in mind that you're going to hear a few things that are kind of repeats, if you will, because they both fall under the design parameters as well as the safety expectations. Here's some imagery to help foster some better understanding of what this looks like in real world. Here are some images from some structures that are built in Lake, or Lake Michigan and the Great Lakes. In the upper left is Egg Harbor Marina in Dora County. Once again, you have a pier structure where you have that center set of, or court concrete with the armor stone on either side. Once again, there's three other images here. Pierre Marquette in Michigan as well, showing a centralized sidewalk or pier structure with armor stone lining it. Once again, in Pauski Harbor, Michigan, there's another one there identified. Once again, these are built, as you can see, to higher standards of the lake level where we're building at an elevation of 587 and a half, tapering down to an elevation of 585. And then we've gone a step further and tapered our stone back as it proceeds to the west to 583, once again, being mindful of the size and scale. Here's a cross, or a direct image to kind of show the relationship between our proposed elder, excuse me, Centennial Beach Pier, as well as the Maple Street Beach Pier. The two images, as you can see on there, the one on the left side of the screen is the elder, or excuse me, is the Centennial Beach Pier. That one is built approximately about 190 feet to the edge of the concrete. The Maple Street Pier, which is not armored, goes out about 235 feet. The widest point of the Centennial Pier is 90, or excuse me, 30 feet tapering back to 15 feet, and the approx, or the width of the Maple Street Pier is about 60 feet, tapering back to a little maybe 40 feet, and then about 15 feet, and then about eight, eight to, seven and a half to eight foot width as it walks all the way back in. Once again, you can see how the armoring of that and the proposed imagery of showing the sand retention of what we're expecting in the image on the left versus what is real world and what is shown on the right. Once again, that reflective energy, the potential rip currents, the rip tides that are caused from that, as well as washout and potential downcutting of the, the clay lakebed layer. Pier safety, as far as training and operations, the swim zones was another one that was brought up in regards to discussion. The image up on the screen here is showing what the proposed swim zone for a single chair at the proposed Centennial Beach would look like. In the center, you'll see that pink-looking box with the words swim zone in the center that would be laid out on the beach and shown with limits on both the north and south side with barriers and would be monitored by lifeguards. You'll see just in front of that, or to the west of that zone, is a guard chair that would oversee that site. As it's proposed to where we see the, the water coming up to the, the stone on the south, it's approximately 78 feet, a little bit greater to the actual pier structure itself, about 93 feet. And then when we look to the north, it's approximately 93 feet to the existing steel that's on the further south side of Elder currently. So this is just depicting that swim zone and what that looks like. I'll let Shannon go into a little greater detail about our lifeguards and our lifeguard process and what we do to get them certified through the American Red Cross. Janet?
So we heard last meeting, the concerns about the certifications and the qualifications of our staff when it comes to our lifeguards that we hire at the Winnetka Park District. So all of our lifeguards are certified waterfront lifeguards, which means they go through two different types of lifeguarding certifications before they are allowed to watch the water at our beaches. So they have, there is with the American Red Cross, there is a lifeguard certification, and for open water, which is what we do, is an additional waterfront lifeguard certification. So with those certification, they go through seven hours of online training, 20 hours of in-water training, which also includes certifications in CPR, AED, first aid, and additional life-saving skills to be the first responder before the first responder gets there. With the waterfront certification, it's not a leisurely swim at the beach for their certification. They are required to do a 550-yard swim, they have to do a two-minute tread, they also have to conduct some specific tasks going underwater, bringing up a weight, making sure that that weight is above water, and they have to do it within a certain time period, about a minute, 20 seconds. So these physical fitness tests, along with the specific training that they do, they also go through in-service trainings throughout the season to make sure they stay up on their skills. One thing that we heard before about lifeguards being on their phones, they are allowed to and are required to have break times, so they're not up on the chair for their full shift. Oh, I went too far. So they rotate on and off about every 20 to 30 minutes. So they are required to be away from on duty to make sure that they stay sharp, that they stay fresh, and that when they get up on the chair, they are ready to watch the water and make sure that our visitors are safe. So when there is a guard chair, they'll be either, they'll be walking the shoreline or on a rescue board in the water. And they, when they're on break, they don't go far just in case they are needed, and to make sure that they are ready for their next time on the chair. So they don't stray too far away. We are looking at, because of that perception, we are looking at better designating that as being an area for their break area, so that perception is, is that they're not, not doing what they're supposed to do. They are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and they're taking that required break. They also go through, again, like I mentioned, in-service trainings, and then we also have our risk management agency, the Pderma, which does three unannounced audits throughout the summer, assessing our, assessing our lifeguards with observations on their in-chair and life-saving skills, and then they do an administrative review as well. Happy to say that we have passed with flying colors, and our risk management agency has been very happy with the results, especially this past summer. We, we had a lot of compliments on how our staff conducted themselves and did their training. We've also provided some images in the presentation of some of those in-service trainings that they've done. Additionally, do you want me to deliver this? Yeah. So additionally, what we do in regards to safety, this summer, we launched in May our Beach Safe Water Safety Campaign, where we held a safety scavenger hunt and community, community education event. We promoted the campaign at every special event this summer, along with the farmer's market. We spoke to over 700 students in D36. We posted signage at the beaches, and we created a webpage on our website in order to promote beach safety with these tips. Thank you.
Shannon, thank you. As Shannon overviewed and reviewed, safety is a big concern for the Park District. It will always be a safety concern for the Park District. We want to make sure that we are very responsible in our efforts to make sure that we oversee and protect those who choose to use the water and enjoy our, or our facilities. Moving into next is parking and traffic. Once again, concerns that we heard from the ZBA, the parking situation on boats, both sites, because we had suggested one is going to help supplement the other, concerns around the location and access to the sites around safety as well. Sheridan Road and the Crescent Street are access to influx of additional parking and how that could be a hindrance to the neighboring community and access for that. So the Park District took it upon themselves to take that next step, to bring in an outside consultant. This evening, we have with us tonight Peter Lemon from Kimberly Horn, who's going to speak momentarily, kind of reviewing his memorandum that he put together. You all have a copy of the memorandum, excuse me, memorandum at your station, as well as electronic copies were submitted to the Community Development Department this afternoon as well. In addition to that, we just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that we, you know, we're willing to take and move further as far as building additional parking, but everything we've heard from the community is balancing the green space. And we feel very confident, confident, confident in our abilities to manage the site with existing conditions and what's proposed versus taking away green space and building additional parking. We don't feel that's the best use of our community asset, and we feel that it's best served as green space for the community to use and enjoy. In addition to that, we also talked about some high-level options to figure out ways to help the initial surge or influx that we might see in the first or second year of a new project or a new beach like this, and when that, you know, what that looks like after it normalizes after a little bit of time. With that being said, the combined site between Elder and Centennial has approximately 80 spot, 80 parking places currently in total. That includes the 68 spots at the upper lot at Elder, as well as one accessible spot down below, and 11 spots combined over at Centennial Park. When you take a look, I know there was conversations and concerns about how other sites were used as well, we just wanted to kind of shed a little perspective on our other beachfront locations. Tower Road Park and Beach, Lloyd Park and Beach and Boat Launch, and as well as Maple Street Park and Beach. The parking count is shown there. Tower currently has two accessible upper parking lot spots, as well as 48 regular parking, parking lot spots. Lloyd Upper has three accessible spots, 53 regular spots. Maple has one accessible spot with 13 regular spots. Elder, we already covered. Peter, if I can have you, or join me here and kind of review and go over some of the evolution of your plan and your review of the sites.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Peter Lemon with Kimley Horn. I'm a transportation engineer, so working on a lot of traffic, parking, things like that. I'm going to take a few minutes to walk through kind of a couple of aspects of our review. So, the first is with regards to traffic generation. So typically, with any kind of project, whether it's new or redevelopment, you tend to look at industry resources. How much traffic might you generate? How much parking might you generate? If it's a multifamily residential building or a restaurant or retail, it's pretty easy to do. Most of those are all pretty consistent and similar from one location to another. When you're talking about parks and beaches, they're all a little bit unique, depends on their location, the programming, the community character and context that they're in and so forth. So, you can't really kind of go to those industry resources to figure out, you know, how many square feet is this, so it's going to be X number of trips and things like that. So, what we started doing was, we looked at, with the park district, we were able to get some data regard, over the last three years regarding how many daily, like season passes, how many daily passes, how many dog passes, things like that. How has this been changing? And it's starting to think about the lakefront parks as a system. And so, from the, the season pass standpoint, the number's actually gone down in the last three years. It's not that different, but it's gone down a little bit. And then the daily passes are much, much lower, like on an order of like a tenth of the season passes. So, we're, that's been relatively consistent up a little bit this last year. And then dog beach passes have been, those are even lower, and those have been consistent over the last three years. So, looking at this, you don't really think of, while we would expect that an improved lakefront parks and beaches at Elder and Centennial would probably draw an uptick a little bit at first, you know, people are interested, it's natural, they want to kind of check out the new place. We would expect it to start to normalize, you know, after the, after the first season or two. So, in terms of the, the traffic side, we don't really see there being like a lot more like traffic drawn to here than maybe what, you know, the, the parking would be able to accommodate. Then on the access front, when you look at these two sites, they would be the same as existing access. So, at Centennial, there's the existing kind of T-intersection, there's 11 spaces there. Based on the traffic volume on Sheridan and the 11 spaces, and assuming there might be some pickup and drop-off, things like that, there's good circulation at the end to turn around and come back. We don't expect that we would see any kind of change or difference in what we pretty much see now. Looking at, just to the north at the, at the Elder Lot, that, that intersection or that access is signalized, so the signal controls both the traffic entering and exiting, which works well. Also, it's, it's nice from a pedestrian standpoint, so you have a controlled pedestrian crossing, so if there's people on the west side of Sheridan going to the east and vice versa, it's a good controlled crossing point for pedestrians. So, from an access standpoint, we don't see any, any big issues there. On the parking, Costa just kind of went through a couple of things, but there's a couple I wanted to point out. The parking at Elder is more than the combined parking at Tower and Maple combined, the other two swimming beaches in Weneca. So, we have more spaces there, we're basically more than doubling, when you think of the swimming beaches, we're more than doubling the existing parking at swimming beaches. We also started to look at, and I realize this table might be a little bit on the smaller side, but we started to look at, what are some other lakefront comparable swimming beaches along the North Shore? So, the top four are those in, in Weneca. The next one is Glencoe Beach and Glencoe, Rosewood Beach and Highland Park. Those are very comparable in terms of size, parking spaces. Then you go a little bit further down the table, we get to Forest Beach and Lake Forest, that's their only public beach. They have more parking spaces, but they also have more amenities. They have a boat launch and swimming and sailing and so forth. So, if you were to add in the parking at Lloyd Beach, then we're actually talking roughly the same number of spaces for the same kind of, roughly the same kind of amenities. And then you can go to, I believe it's Sunrise Beach and Lake Bluff, they actually have no parking. Everyone there parks in the neighborhood. Most of these places, especially if they have parking off-site for like half-mile, three-quarter mile walk, those are options at most of these as well. So, in terms of how this compares to a lot of other beaches, swimming beaches, it's pretty similar. In terms of potential parking measures, there's a couple of things that could, that could happen if, you know, if, if we decided there was issues and we wanted to try to further address them. One is, again, as I mentioned, thinking of it as a system, just at the swimming beaches, we'd have over 140 parking spaces. There's nothing that restricts someone, say, that wants to go to Centennial, realizes the parking's full there or at Elder, to continue going north up to Maple or to Tower. There's nothing that, in your path, that restricts you from one to the other, so they're all interchangeable. So, through signage and management, that way you can help redistribute. You can look at things like certain restrictions on the parking for resident-only. Currently, on the weekends, the, and holidays, it's season pass only to restrict some of the, the crowd size. You could do the same kind of thing on weekdays if you found that that was an issue. And then there could be potential for overflow parking. So, one example might be at Nutria. Today, the Elder Lane parking lot is used for student parking during the week. Students, I've, you know, observed them walking down Elder to Essex, down to Nutria. You could, that's about a quarter mile. You could have the same kind of thing in reverse flow on days if there was overflow parking ever needed. So, that could be another example in terms of dealing with some of those potential challenges. To summarize, we looked at the special use standards, so number four and five relate to traffic and parking. So, based on the, you know, our review of the plan, review of the data regarding season pass sales, daily pass sales, dog, dog beach sales, we don't anticipate there to be any significant issues caused by the plan as proposed. The acts from, number four is related to traffic, so the access to both remain the same, and we expect those not to cause any kind of new or meaningful congestion in terms of entering or exiting the parks. In particular, the, the access at the largest parking lot of the two at Elder is controlled by a traffic signal, which is also is beneficial from a pedestrian access standpoint with mark crosswalks and controlled crossings. And then in terms of number five, which is related to, or has some aspect related to parking, we, you know, the, the two parking lots can work together, they're roughly 200, 250 feet or so apart, so they can easily work back and forth between the two. I talked earlier about how the number of spaces actually is more than the current swimming beach spaces, and then compared to other communities, we would expect that the number of spaces that are proposed in total are adequate to handle the beach parking demands. I think that's all I have, but I'm here for questions later.
Peter, thank you. As Peter kind of alluded to and shown on the screen here is some images, this is kind of a bird's eye view showing the location of Centennial as it relates to Nutria, and then potentially even further, taking a look at Indian Hill Train Station, the metro lot there, where there is some park parking and public parking on the north side, that could be something else, that could be an amenity too for consideration, whether it's allowing for accessible, you know, people to walk there, or maybe consideration for shuttle as kind of suggested earlier. Those are things that we're willing to take a look at as needed, but like to just make sure that the zoning board understands our review and understanding on how we can move forward within the current design. Restrooms were brought up also as a concern, especially around accessible bathrooms as well. Right now, short of building the facility, that wouldn't be allowed based on the steep-slope ordinance. We are recommending that in our current light, that we can provide a seasonal ADA-accessible restroom, in this case, or portable restroom, to accommodate those needs. We can look at different opportunities of what that looks like, so it's not just necessarily a portage on, maybe it's something nicer, but that's something that we can take a look at further to allow for accessible restroom facilities at Centennial Park. Our future goal, as we discussed previously, is to combine the two sites whenever that might happen, or if that can happen, then we'll have a boardwalk that would be interchanged and linked between the two, so you have accessible bathrooms at, at Elder. But in the interim for now, until we can achieve that goal, we definitely could look at something seasonal to address that concern. Pedestrian bypass was another concern that we heard. Once again, there's a couple of options of us, allow, to allow us to be able to achieve this. Once, of course, the easiest one, the lowest hanging fruit, we need to work with our neighbor, talk about what a understanding might look like for an easement agreement between the two parties and address it that way. I know there was concerns brought up from the public, with presentations that were submitted on behalf of representatives of the public on how to address that concern. The other option is to modify the fence line. As shown here in the image, in the orange, we can do an offset from the property line to allow a six-foot accessible pathway, in this case, in width, because it is going to be on the sand, to achieve that goal. So, we definitely have some opportunities ahead of us to address that concern, whether, like I said, it's potentially low-hanging fruit with an easement agreement, or we look forward, look for an option to modify the fence line to address that concern. But either way, we feel that the pedestrian bypass is something that could be easily So, I want to kind of wrap up in conclusion. Once again, you've seen this slide, this is kind of the first slide or the second slide you saw, going back through, talking about our pier design, reduction of riptides, preventing lakebed downcutting, improved access to Lake Michigan or the founding concerns that helped drive that pier design. Pier safety, once again, the monitoring of the swim zones and our, our certified lifeguards, our, you know, deterrents that we have in place to address the safety concerns around pier safety as it's, as it's been designed. Reductions of riptides from our existing conditions to what's proposed, that's going to probably be one of the, the biggest safety concerns that we'll be able to address right out of the gate with our design as well. Parking and traffic, again, was identified through the potential reduction in green space. We can build parking lots, once again, as Peter elaborated on. The usage and how we've taken and identified the usage of the park space compared to what we have within the community and what we would have comparable to here is quite interesting. And the ability to achieve that goal with our existing parking and not have to build or take away green space is another terrific way to accomplish that. Once again, seasonal accommodations of a possible, or of an ADA portable restroom, pedestrian bypass and ways to achieve that goal. And then again, as it's been discussed and was part of the recommendation, the beach closure and signage is something that we take seriously and we will accommodate as we've talked through, and whatever is concerned with the village engineer and community development on how to address that, as well as discussions around the handrail and putting a handrail around the entire pier itself to address another safety concern option that was discussed at the zoning board level. Once again, I'd just like to note that those changes would have to be reviewed and approved by the park district board. Staff doesn't have the authority to make those changes. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up to any questions that I or the rest of the team for the park district can answer for the ZBA this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Costa, for the, for the presentation. Why don't we, we're going to hold off on public comment for just a moment so that we can get some near-term questions. This is going out of order of how we've normally done at the last two meetings, but I want to make sure we've given ourselves a chance to ask questions of the applicant here first. It may, or may not be helpful to minimize or, you know, better inform the public comment that might follow on it. And then, again, as we go through public comment, we'll offer you the ability to respond to any of those comments when we get to them, but we're not in the public comment section yet. Does anybody have questions? We can take these broadly, or we can sort of iso them by sort of the key areas as, as they presented it this way. I'll say at the outset, you know, we're reacting to this, you know, minutes into having heard it. I understand you've had time to prepare in the, in the time since our, our November meeting to pull this together, be it the design statement, be it the consulting that was done on the parking side. This is all hitting us now. There was, none of this was reviewed in advance. Certainly, none of it was able to have been reviewed by the public. So, right out of the gate, I'm a little bit trying to deduce how I'm supposed to respond here, because I haven't had the, the luxury of time to weigh and sit on all of the testimony and information that you just provided tonight. But, we'll start with questions and see whether or not we can elicit some level of education in real time, and then we'll go from there. So, does anyone want to start with questions? Again, we can take this, it might be helpful, actually, Costa, rather than the, the thank you slide, if we could go to the summarization slide?
Yeah.
Thank you. That might be a good way to tackle this. Why don't we, unless there's any objection from everybody, why don't we take it in kindness to some of the issues here? Or Lynn?
Can I skip all my questions?
Sure.
Okay. These are the notes that I made as I was listening, because like Matt said, not having been able to review this ahead of time, I was just trying to take notes on, as, as you spoke. So, I will probably have more questions as we go through this, but this is what I have off the top of my head. On the swim zone, the swim zone square, what does that look like to a swimmer on the beach? How do they know where the swim zone is? And I'm thinking of Tower, been a while since I've swam at Tower, but I know there's little buoys that kind of float out there and no one knows why they're there, but, and I'm assuming that is the swim zone. But how, what does this look like to a swimmer on the beach?
Sure. So, if you were going there to enjoy the day swimming, you would find yourself walking up to the beach, you would have a guard attendance, in this case, a guard chair that would be centralized, and then there's flags limiting or denoting the, the north and south boundaries of the swim zone. From there, there is a distance out, and the guards will let the person, or let the, the residents know what that distance is based on the conditions of the day. If it's a choppy day, you know, they'll put people closer to shore. If it's a flatter day, the buoys, as you had indicated, Lynn, is typically the, the western, or excuse me, the eastern barrier. But the north and south barriers are denoted by the chair and by the staff that day with flags that are basically pushed into the sand to show the limitations of that. We're showing that 150 here, but that could be reduced, once again, depending on personnel, how many people are on the beach, how many guards are roaming that day, so that's a variable, but we're anticipating at the largest setting, 150 feet in width.
So, there's nothing in the water that delineates a northern boundary and a southern boundary of the swim zone?
The guards pay attention to where swimmers are, and you might have heard, I know we've heard comments that they whistle too many times, but they'll call out and make sure people are aware that if they're in the swim zone or without, or out of the swim zone. So, they have an audible alarm that would, by the guards that are indicated, as well as denoted on the beach itself with the flags. And those run basically perpendicular out to the buoys that are in the lake itself.
Okay.
So, that's how that swim zone is identified, is you have the flags on the north and south borders, you have the guards informing and educating the participants, as well as the, the buoys on the east side of our, in the lake.
And then, is there anything in the sand north and south of the swim zone that says, do not enter the water here?
There is nothing per se, there's not like it's, we're putting up ribbons that says it's closed. Sometimes people will be on the shoreline, splash their feet or so far, but they're not allowed to go in and go swimming.
Okay.
So.
I guess that's, I mean, I want to know, you know, if some, if somebody's going to the beach for the first time or whatever, like, how is that going to be explained to them that you swim in this zone? But it...
It's self-evident, if you will.
Okay.
A lot of people will pay attention to what other people are doing, and if they're doing something wrong, that's where the guards will come in and educate, inform.
Is there generally, and I know we talked about the, how the guards are certified and trained and all that, but can you tell me again, what does that look like? How many guards are on the beach and if, so, yeah, so to answer that first, how many guards are paying, who are on duty on the beach at one time?
Sure. I don't feel comfortable speaking on that because I am maintenance, I'm not operations as it relates to guard safety. Our, Matt Barton, who is our lakefront manager, would be best suited to answer those questions.
Okay.
I will go on a limb and make suggestions. This isn't my testimony, this is my assumptions based on the information I've known from working here so long. Typically, there's always at least one in the chair, and there's at least one or two roaming guards.
Okay.
And as Shannon expressed earlier, there are backup guards and the backup manager onsite as well.
Okay.
So, if there is a rescue or if there's a need to activate, anybody who's onsite that's certified lifeguard for the personnel will activate to address that concern, while others are also monitoring the rest of the swim zone and make sure there's no other, no other hazards as well.
That's kind of what I wanted to get a sense of, like, how many people are actively monitoring the swim zone? And then, moving on to parking, do we have any of our lots that are resident-only or beach pass-only parking? Are any, are any of our beach lots set up to be resident-only or season pass holder only?
Currently on the weekends, that's how they are set. And for the existing Centennial lot, it's set for dog pass holders only. That's the way that is set up currently.
Is there signs for that? I don't remember ever seeing a sign. Okay. I, I mean, I have to take your word on it.
Yep.
I don't remember. And I do remember for Lloyd, having paddle boards, that they gave me a parking pass. Is that, is it because I, am I allowed to park there only because I have a paddleboard pass?
Yes.
So, is, so no one else can park at Lloyd unless you have a paddleboard or boat pass? Is that true?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's daily fees and others during the week, but on the weekends, it's pass holders.
Okay. So that's only weekends? Okay.
Correct.
Is that something you would consider for parking? To do a resident-only or a pass holder-only parking, and that's weekday in the summer?
That could be something that we look further into. I'd like to see how it works and just the influx of cars and the concern, but that's something that we can definitely look into as an opportunity to address that concern.
Okay. And then, my last comment, this is really more of a comment in the phrase of a question, is I know on the pier design, they, the engineers mentioned that the length of the pier aligns with other piers in the other beaches. I'm not sure I understand, I, I'm coming to understand what the pier does and why it's there and that perhaps it's not just an aesthetic thing, but I'm still not sure it has to be that big. And if it's only because aesthetically it looks good with other piers, is that, is that why it's that long? Does it have to be that long and does it have to match the other piers? So that, I'm just throwing that out there as something that I'm tossing around in my head.
Sure. I'll respond this way. The pier design as it's been presented is what's best designed for that park to reduce the amount of erosion, lake bed downcutting from the northeastern storms. So the farther you can go out, the greater protection you have from those storms coming across. So you're able to break off, or break up a lot more of that kinetic energy, you're able to retain more sand through the littoral system. If you have one pier that goes out this far and the other pier goes out this far, the sand's going to naturally kind of work itself across. When you have two piers that are run equal distance as far as into the lake, they're going to both capture the probably about, approximately the same amount of sand and work in that same capacity, excuse me, to provide protection for the shoreline.
So we're talking about the Elder pier, right? And the, and that aligning with the proposed Centennial pier?
You know what? This is probably the best image I could pull up within the presentation, and I apologize.
That's okay.
The existing steel that is on the north side of Centennial, or on the north side of Elder and the distance that it is off, is what's being proposed in regards to in line with the distance for the pier at Centennial as it's proposed, is once again, taking consideration that littoral drift, making sure that it's built in line and is functional. The distance out, could it be adjusted? Anything could be adjusted. We are presenting what we feel is best for the community as a public beach, size and scale, and to protect our natural asset, which is Centennial Beach in this regard.
Okay. Those are, I think that's all I have at this time, Mike, or Matt.
Okay. I, can I, I want everybody else to ask their questions. I'm going to save mine. I've got a lot. But just while we have this slide up, and again, we keep talking about Elder as it relates to the parking, and as you guys all know, the Elder Beach Project is not before us, so we're relying on it for certain purposes as it relates to parking. I have no conceptual understanding of what is being designed to be done as a use at Elder Beach, to know whether or not the 65 spaces that are earmarked at Elder, which are being now used to potentially serve as a meaningful backstop to the 11 spaces that are at Centennial, to what extent the combined effect of those two spaces, once Elder Beach is open, creates essentially a problem that we're delaying until a later time. That's not my question. My question is, as I look at this drawing, am I, am I seeing what may be projected, presented later at a later meeting, as three or two additional pier designs? One immediately to the south, southernmost end of Elder, and an additional at the northernmost end of Elder? Are there three additional piers of this size and scale complexity coming?
To answer that question specifically, there's going to be no piers at Elder. The existing pier gets removed and the structures that you see are not pier structures, but armor stone revetments to protect the shoreline and protect against erosion. There is going to be no physical pier at Elder Lake Beach.
Time out, time out, time out, time out.
I don't understand that.
Okay. I, Coach, I thank you for your answer to the question. Let's, we're going to get back to all that. I just wanted to ask as to the drawing. Let's, let's move on down the lines to other questions people have. Any, in any order, nobody has to...
So, what is the, based on the plans as they exist right now, what is the bather load for Centennial? And it's a, it's a term of art in Illinois. It's the maximum number of persons that can be allowed in the swimming facility at a time without creating undue health or safety hazards.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I believe it's based on a six, six foot by six foot, so basically a 36 square foot area. I would have to calculate out the math to come up that figure for you.
Okay. That's going to impact a lot in terms of, you know, parking within a certain number of feet, the, you know, bathroom facilities, the, you know, there's a lot here that Illinois code, the public health code, is going to be impacted by. And I know that we are looking at things here now, but there's a lot more coming down the line. And, you know, I think that there are certain things that would be helpful to know. And I think having some idea of how many people are going to be expected to safely use this facility and, you know, park and, you know, enjoy the space, I think that that's, that would be a helpful thing to know. Again, it's, you know, a question, kind of, I backed into it, but it's a thing that I am thinking about as, as we're working on this.
If I can help, just kind of think about that holistically, when you think about Tower and the size and scale of which that is, and the amount of shoreline that it provides, because there is a lot more sand provided at Tower from the, basically from the water's edge, all the way up to the total block, is an open, beautiful beach. We have playground facilities there, we have water features on the beach to activate that. We have our designated swim zones, we have ADA parking at the ground level. It's never fully packed. And the times that it is, you might see, you know, on the anomalies on the Fourth of July weekends and so forth. And I haven't heard a large outcry and concern about parking or congestion in those areas based on those days. Lot of people utilize, you know, whether they walk, they, you know, take their scooters, they pull their wagons with them to enjoy the beach. The influx of people and what that is, I don't think parking's going to be a bigger issue as it relates to the size and scale and what that looks for Centennial, Elder. It's hard to say. But when you think about it holistically and you think about all the different elements that we offer, you know, we are potentially offering four swimming beaches now, you know, where we have existing two. So that influx of people has now going to be distributed over four beaches.
So, I'm sorry, help me understand that. We've got Tower, we've got Lloyd, we've got Maple, we've got...
And Centennial proposed.
But, so, are we, is Elder Centennial one project or is it two projects? Because right now, we are just looking at Centennial. So, the concept that we keep having to consider, oh yeah, but, you know, the parking and, you know, walk in the water so you get to the bathroom, it's, this, it doesn't make sense to me that we're being asked to consider only Centennial for some things, but Centennial and Elder for other things, without having a fulsome look at what Elder is. I know that you have the right to present them separately as you're doing, but the concept that we are being asked to consider them separately for some things and together for other things is disjointed and disconcerting for me.
What I would mention about the parking concern is if we were to look at other options for parking, such as Nutria or the Indian Hill Station, or Maple, or Tower as other parking lots that can serve this area, that is the only way that we are looking at Elder in this context as well, is it is another option for parking for this facility. We're not looking at the design elements. We're looking at, this is available parking that will be available for this facility during this phase, during the next phase, during currently, just as another parking lot that we might have access to would be as well. So that's how we are looking at it from that context. We're not looking at it as adding these two parks together as one project at this point. They are absolutely, as you mentioned, they are two separate projects. But looking at, the zoning board of appeals has asked us to come up with solutions for parking, and this is what we're trying to do, is provide those solutions for parking without impacting the green space that the community holds so dear.
So if Elder never happens, if you never open the beach again...
That parking would still be available.
And so we would have to consider it even though it is not in front of us? Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I just want to emphasize that we hired a traffic engineer to do a holistic analysis of the Park District's swimming system. And they applied engineering rigor to evaluate the volume of parking that people who choose to drive to a beach, who choose to drive to a swimming beach, how the swimming system can absorb those drivers versus bike riders, scooters, walkers, whatever. So, the engineer opined that the Park District's swimming beach system has enough parking to absorb the use that the community has for parking at our swimming beaches. Those are the facts in the record. Everything else...
I'm sorry, on what page is that?
That's in the Kimley Horn report.
And, I'm sorry, when did we receive that? Today?
Today.
What time?
I, I'm, I'm not asking you to draw conclusions. I'm just pointing out that the only facts in the record are the Kimley Horn report.
We have an opinion, we have an opinion from a third-party consultant that you engaged to conduct a seasonal, albeit in December, review of the parking constraints on our beaches, contemplating the prior use cases and what may be contemplated on this site, limiting it to not including what may be done on Elder. Is that, is that fair consideration of what they've looked at thus far?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've evaluated the existing use case and we've provided contingent solutions in the event that the experience we see demonstrates that overflow parking is required.
Sure.
And so, based on the, the engineering study that we've received and proffered, one, we think that the system is adequate to provide parking. If the actual experience proves otherwise, we've suggested real solutions to provide overflow parking.
And a real-world, you know, review of this might be, look, they're all sequentially in a row. If you, if you ideally want to park at Centennial and you get there just a little too late and you realize that all 11 of those spots are filled, your next best spot from the beach chairs and the strollers and all, everything that's coming down, is to go just slightly north to Elder, take advantage of those spots. The Park District is not trying to minimize or keep those spots exclusive to guests of that. So the spread effect of that will blunt roughly, hey, it doesn't matter if you're going to go down to Elder or you're going to go to Centennial. If you want to gamble and go even further up to Maple and enjoy a nice stroll and a walk and get a little energy up before you get to Centennial Beach, you guys will have free rein of all of the otherwise publicly available spots, with the exception of Lloyd, which the parking consultant did reference as part of his account, but overlooked the fact that on the heaviest of those days, which is the weekends, those are limited to those who have parking passes to take advantage of those spots because Lloyd is not a swimming beach. Lloyd is a sailing beach. So, and Tower Road might just be a little bit too far of an imagination to imagine somebody is going to walk from Centennial.
We don't even worry about walkers because walkers don't have, there's no limitation on how many people can walk to the beach.
Right.
They don't need a parking space.
Right. No, I'm saying walk once you've parked your car. Nobody's going to park at Tower Road and walk to Centennial Beach, even though you're creating a meaningfully different beach experience.
If they took the trouble to drive to the beach, if they need to relocate, they're going to move their car.
Right.
So they're going to drive to Tower, or drive to Maple, or drive to Elder or Centennial. Like, if they're already in their car, they're going to move the car.
Is it, is it, is it fair to assume that because the dog beach is located where it is, that those dog beach owners will take advantage as best they can of the parking situation at Centennial to take advantage of the exclusive dog beach that you guys have decided to put at the southern end of that beach? Won't that be a fair assumption of where a dog owner is likely to park their car and bring their dog to take advantage of that dog beach?
The dog owners that need to drive through the dog beach will have to drive to one of these two parking lots.
Right, okay. I want to open it up to further questions people have.
Can I make one quick comment in regards to the parking study?
Sure, please.
The intent wasn't to blindside the ZBA this evening. The final draft, we received it this afternoon.
Sure.
So we got it in your hands just as fast as we did. With the holiday and our consideration, try to get this done from the last request literally a month ago, we moved as fast as we could to achieve it. So I apologize that you're getting this in the 11th hour. It wasn't our intent to give it to you in the 11th hour. It's just unfortunate the timing and how it worked out. So I apologize on behalf of the Park District. The intent wasn't to blindside with this information, but just get it to you as fast as we could.
Appreciate having the information again. I, I think the date on it was...
The first draft we received was the sixth.
Understood.
And the final draft was this afternoon.
Understood. Mark, get some questions?
Yeah. With the same caveats that Lynn had, you know, we're working, I've got a few questions to start. Can I ask Mr. Lemon to come up again, please? Thank you.
Yeah.
Your report says that you don't have the data, you need to wait until at least to confirm certain things, or that you would want to do an analysis in the summer of 2025, which is unavailable at this time, given the seasonal nature of the beach and, and the time that you were requested to do this. So you weren't requested to do this last summer?
That's correct. Right. So, yeah, doing counts of the parking lots in November, December would not, obviously...
Meaningless, of course.
Yeah, yeah. So what, you know, like I said, what we did, we looked at the data that would be available in terms of passes and tickets, or, you know, daily fee sales, things like that, give us a sense of how active things are. But that doesn't tell us, I mean, we can, I can only speak anecdotally from when I've seen the parking lots in the summer, but I, I haven't gone around and done counts in the summer. So what we did was we drew some conclusions, but we've talked about the need to validate them, or we would like to validate those. That being said, I think there's, there's fallback options, but I think we would, you know, this wouldn't be built this year. So I think we would want to be moving forward and then, and being able to validate some of these options in terms of actual use or counts of the parking lots, of the driveways, things like that, at a time where it would make sense to, like, June, July, that kind of thing.
Right. Do you think 11 spaces is adequate, 11 spaces is adequate for Centennial, given the plan that you're looking at and the data, the average parking spaces?
I think if you combine that Centennial and Elder lot...
No, I guess is 11 adequate?
I think compared to others, that would be on the smaller side. It'd be similar to Maple. I mean, Maple is, I think, got a couple more spaces than, than Centennial does.
Have you done any analysis of beaches up and down the North Shore here in terms of parking spaces and...
I haven't done counts of demand at the other spaces that we highlighted in the table.
There's been no, no one's asked you to do an analysis at another beach, another...
Like, for example, have we had a client like...
Yeah, Glencoe or in wherever.
No, we have not done those, we have not done that.
So Glencoe has, if I, the only way I can, or one way I could compare this is the amount of shoreline to the amount of spaces. And if you look at Glencoe, there's a parking space for, for every, less than six feet of shoreline. And at Centennial, 11 spaces would be a space for every 50 feet. And if you combine the two, it's still a space for every 12 feet. So in other words, there's far more parking per shoreline at Glencoe than there would be under any circumstance at these beaches. And...
As a, like a linear foot per space kind of ratio?
That's right. If you look at just beaches and, I know they have different depths to them and so forth, but, you know, when you think about number of people who fit on the beach.
Sure.
Glencoe, as a matter of fact, is, has some similarities, at least to the plan that we see here. I tend to, I have frequented that quite a bit because one of my kids lives up there and those spaces are at a premium. A lot of times I find I don't have enough spaces, space to park with 94 spaces for 500 feet.
Yeah, and again, I'm just...
So I'm having, I'm having difficulty with your... So I'm having, I'm having difficulty with your, I know it's a tentative conclusion and I know you've done the best that you can under the circumstances, but I guess I'm just pointing out that it's a swag at this point.
Yeah, the one thing I would say is Glencoe Beach is their beach. That's the one beach they have, correct? As far as I'm aware, that's their one swimming beach. And they've got, I think it's like, I had like roughly 94 spaces for that beach.
Right.
I think if you're looking at Weneka's beaches, it's not just, this isn't your only option to go to the beach in Weneka. You have other swimming beach options. So you could go to Maple, you could go to Tower. And when you look at those collectively and how many spaces are available between this location and those locations, then I think it's fair to kind of look at it that way. This isn't, everyone in Weneka isn't only going to be going just to this beach. They have other beaches.
No, but we're building a big beach there that we hope people go to, right? And I can understand walking up to Elder, but walking from, parking the car and bringing the kids down from Maple, don't think it's going to happen, right? So it just means you're going to a different beach.
That's right.
Which has its own concerns and needs for parking, right?
Yeah, I would, I would not, I did not mean to suggest that someone's going to drive up to Maple, park in their lot, and then walk back down to this beach. I don't think that's realistic to expect. I think if you're driving up to Maple and you get a parking spot there, why would you not just go to Maple Beach?
Right, so doesn't that mean that this beach is potentially underserved by parking then?
Well, I mean, you could look at...
Or that we should at least stop talking about what's going on up at Maple because Maple has its own, unless you want to compare averages, which I understand.
Yeah, and I think if you just look at, in general, if I'm in Weneka, I want to go to the beach, I have multiple options. Some might have more parking spaces than others. If the parking spaces are full, I'm probably not going to that beach.
No, but we're talking about building out a plan for Centennial Beach so that people go to Centennial Beach.
Sure.
We're not talking about the other beaches that we have, which are of course options. So I just want to start bringing us back to where we are right now. So in any event, it seems like you would want, it would make sense for you to do some review in the summer of 2025. At least you'll be able to gather that data that you couldn't gather this summer because you weren't engaged.
Right.
And then you could come to a determination or have a better, have a better basis for a determination as to whether or not the parking is adequate and the traffic is adequate and the pedestrian flow is adequate.
We would have more information in terms of the actual demand as opposed to just looking at the capacities, correct?
Right. Okay, okay. Thank you.
If I can just note real quick on that point, if you take in consideration, Elder is currently closed and it's not planned on being open next year, and Centennial is currently used as a dog park, the information that you would get or rendered from that parking count wouldn't necessarily be apples and apples, it'd be apples and oranges. So that's something else to consider as well, as far as the current design of what it is and how that parking count would be potentially misstrued because you don't have a real grasp on what it is. I'd also like to note that previous, Centennial previously was a swimming beach prior to being a dog park with that existing parking lot in place as it exists today, which served the purpose, and I don't believe there was questions at that time. Of course, I'm too young to understand or know that and then work in the community at that time, but it did serve the beach as a swimming beach when it was a swimming beach at that time with the existing parking configuration as it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Also wanted to, sorry, I apologize, wanted to remind the board about the options that we put into the presentation in regards to land banking and also utilizing potential other entities to work hand in hand with to be able to help us with parking needs as well, with memorandums and understanding and that sort of thing, like say with, possibly with the Nutria School District, that sort of thing. So I just wanted to make sure.
Land banking? Could you run that one by me again, land banking again? Would you?
Shuttleting.
The shuttle? Okay, I'm sorry.
Land banking is different than a shuttle, but Costa, do you want to?
Okay, okay.
Essentially, as kind of are discussed in the presentation here, shown in the third bullet point, it's basically taking away the green space and building parking. So taking that consideration of taking that land baking, if you will, and utilizing that green space in regards to parking versus keeping it as green space. So we're not suggesting that we're not willing to do that, but understanding what that is and how that can come to fruition, we feel it's best used as green space to provide that because the parking that we're suggesting here combined, of course, but will still allow to be able to achieve our goal.
Land banking is where a landowner provides an enforceable promise to expand parking upon certain triggers being met. We wouldn't build it now, but we would allow the triggers to be built now so that if we needed to add more asphalt and take away some of the parkland to build more parking, that land bank would be like a covenant on the table land where we would say, if X, then we would build more parking spaces. But we wouldn't do it yet.
Okay, thank you. Costa, just one sort of, this may sound like a crazy overall question coming right now, but why, why is the pier put in the middle of the property? And how does that affect accretion to the north and accretion to the south? We talk about storms coming in from the northeast and dragging things around. Why not put it at one end and, you know, get all the sand, you know? Why not put it at the south end or why not put it at the north end for that matter? Why do we put it in the middle and doesn't that cause us to have a left side, right side as against a flow that's coming inexorably from the north and the northeast?
So the location of the pier was identified for the very reason as we discussed earlier. If we were to relocate the pier as it's been shown here, I brought up the image of the existing design, the further north we put that, we have, and once again, I'm not trying to bring up Elder, but part of our consideration is current improvements, i.e. steel groynes that exist today, not proposed what we're doing in the future, but exist today, the steel groynes project out to a certain distance. So in turn, you have greater protection from those northeast storms where you're protected. So once you start looking at those gaps on where the structures are and where they're placed, I think I could show you from an image, here kind of works a little bit. If you look at Glencoe Beach up in the top right-hand corner, you'll see the steel groynes as they come out and you see the accretion of sand in that angular cove as it's been shown here. This is real-world conditions as of June of 2023. The placement of the structure, the length of the structure and the relationship to the shoreline creates different zones. In this case, what you're going to be able to accrete and catch the sand, what you're going to have as a nominal sand condition and what you might not have. The further south we push that, the more chance you have of erosion to the north of the structure and you have a smaller swimming beach. So by design, our beach is presented to be a swimming beach on the north, so the further north you put it, in this case in the center as identified, gives you a more sustainable beach and more beach to use for swimming and in turn protects it to the south as well. So the choice of the location is very strategic in our, in our review, based on the engineering, the design principles that have gone into this and what as it would produce, in this case, retain and protect our shoreline.
Was it, was it put there to create a dog beach?
It was not there to create a dog beach. It allows for the dog beach to be sustained.
And if it were put to the south end of the property, when you, when we look at Glencoe, it looks like they got a boatload of sand to the north on their diagram by putting their pier to the south end of, the south end there?
To an extent, but those beaches are, and environments are entirely different. I'm not a coastal engineer, I just know what I've learned over, you know, working on these projects through the Lakefront Master Plan and before for the last 10 years. I don't pretend to be an expert on this subject matter, I'm just only informing you on what I've learned. The design as it's proposed, and we take that same illustration of Glencoe Beach, or June of 2023, those steel groynes, as you see in front of the structure, are protecting that structure and in turn, there's images that you don't see here in 2020 when the beach drops back even further in those high lake conditions. Is there a balance of what it will accommodate for sand and so forth? Of course there is. And each beach design where it is in the toral system is different as well, outputs the information, the sand conditions, the type of sand, all of that plays a role into this. The bathometry, the understanding of the depths of the clay, the understanding of the depths of the existing sand, what structures you have upstream, what structures you have downstream, all play into the design. Like I said, I'm not the expert on this, but we hired the experts through our RFP process. Red Barn and Shabigan Associates were identified and we've moved forward with the design as proposed and we're confident that this design will meet the requirements that we've suggested and will be able to be able to, will be able to be approved through the state and federal regulatory agencies as well, as stated in the design statement today.
One more question for you and then I'm going to pass it on for now. Costa, you talk about putting in a portable restroom for the ADA and I think you depicted it at the, at the circle. Is that what that, that orange?
That square is identified as a location, but we're not necessarily married to that being the only location, but we're, we're open to the idea and we could find a better location wherever that might be.
And again, can you tell me why you did not consider a permanent structure there?
In regards to the park itself, the park level?
The park, yeah.
Well, once again, going back to history, the park district attempted to build a restroom facility there, poured the foundation, laid the foundation and the structure was on its way and was told to remove it.
By, by whom?
By the community.
By the community?
Yep.
I mean, there's a lot of pretty big stuff that's going on here. We didn't, we have an ADA ramp and so forth and, and so I guess I'm just wondering why a porta potty would be the appropriate response versus, I mean, I got to imagine, well, I don't want to imagine, I just, I'm just surprised that there isn't, that there wasn't a structure proposed and see what people think about it today. I don't know what this, were you there when this was, when they were told to remove it?
I was not.
Okay. I mean, so how many years ago was that?
I was in the 90s, or actually, no, that was the late 80s, I believe.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it just, it just seems like that was, that was a long time ago, but...
You can ask Amy Schreiber, she was on the board at the time.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that's the reason. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to take a swing at some questions?
I have one question. I don't know if this can be answered today, but I at least want to ask it. The pictures that you had of the rubble mound and how wide it is, could you flip to that slide, please?
Sure.
I just wondered if you could provide what the width at the, what the width of the rubble will be during the different lake life cycle heights, at the high water and at the low water and where it would be, say, today?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exact figures. Right now, with an approximate lake elevation around 580, I would, I would suggest, as we have shown in the depiction, because our illustrations are based off of 580, that the width was approximately 10 to 15 feet, as I noted earlier. As the water would recede or drop down, that would increase in size. And then vice versa, as the water would go up, that would be reduced in size.
I understand what it'll look like directionally. I'd just like to get the footage.
Sure.
Both for the narrow part of the pier and the wide part of the pier at those different points. Thank you.
Anyone else got questions right now? I've got a couple. I want to, Costa, can you go to the Option A, Option Alternative as it relates to the accessibility to the shoreline from a, the walking pedestrian?
I'm not sure which one.
It's towards the end.
I'm sorry?
The fence, the fence at the southernmost point.
Oh, yes, I apologize.
Yes, thank you very much, okay. I'm looking at standard two, which is the special use, will not be substantially injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity, which would be permitted by right. Obviously, the public land that we're asking people to be able to navigate here. The content that you heard from us at the prior meeting was, we're not understanding why the dog fence is being set where it is that is requiring such feats of illogical maneuverability by our citizenry to otherwise continue the navigable OHWM, as it were. And it seems as though the comment or the modification that we're getting now, again, seeing it in real time, is a slight modification to avoid the easement, which is great, we're starting with some sort of mitigation of it. But I've yet to hear the evidence as to why the dog beach is the size that it is, particularly given testimony that the number of licenses for owners utilizing the dog beach is only decreasing. Why are we providing the dog beach at the dimensions we are, which seem to sacrifice accessibility to this bypass, which in my instance is putting the animals before the humans, and I just don't have an answer to it? So could you speak to why the dog beach, and particularly the southernmost fence line for the dog beach is being, was originally contemplated where it is, has been modified to where it's shown here and why it's not practically possible that that fence line could be pushed even further to the north to allow for a much more obvious, a much more safe and a much more clear representation that you value the pedestrian access across public lands to continue to be maintained? Can you speak to that, Costa?
Sure. So real quick to clarify, as Peter suggested earlier, on page five of the Kimley Horn report, table three shows the dog beach season, dog beach season passes. Overall, Peter had suggested that they're flat, not necessarily declining. So just clarify that, that they are staying flat. In this case, 2024 was actually an uptick. As it relates to your questions, Chair Bradley, the original design was based off of the existing infrastructure, not to add additional cost to the project. So utilizing the existing steel groin as the foundation for the fencing was the reason for the placement of that. The park board also opined based on information that was received by the community, when the original master plan actually had the dog park removed, to put it back in, to put it back in, which they voted on, and they gave the staff limitations on the size parameters for that dog beach. The size that we've, or that we've shown here is within that scale and size. Once again, looking at the south end, identifying the foundation on how we can achieve the, the build out of that implement. The consideration for the access through there and where it is, individual could easily walk down the boardwalk, down the staircase, 12-foot wide there, and then turn the corner to meet the, the natural stone steps that were set in the south structure. It was discussed and understanding that the need to walk on what's been opined as our private property, and that was discussed, and these were the options as we discussed at prior meetings, that we can either bump it out and work around it or look to an easement. We still feel confident in the potential of an easement. And Adam, if I can ask you to opine based on conversations, the, the agreement that's been put in place, there are suggestions that they would be open to the interpretation of an easement. Is that fair and factual?
I've spoken with representatives of the owners of 205 Sheridan Road. They're in the process of completing their project. They would like to finish their project and once it's completed, they are happy to address with us our needs to the north. But they want it just to put their head down and finish their project right now. They're not objecting to our project, they actually support our project, but we obviously have an alternative to getting an easement if we need to. If that falls through, we can relocate the fence and make sure there's adequate pedestrian access completely on park district property.
Okay.
If I can, I'm just, I'm just going off the fence. I still have further to clarify from Matthew's comment, but sure.
Yeah, okay, so we don't have an easement yet, as I was wondering, they want to finish their project. Before they address it. So the fallback is this, this fence that you have jutted out here. Does that mean you would have to actually build additional structure there or would the fence be hanging out and you just have to be careful not to drop in the water?
We would have to set footings to secure the fence as it's proposed with the orange line as identified here.
So you'd have to build out structure that would hold a human being up at that level?
The line to the left, the offset jog, the yellow line, they're both orange, I apologize. One is a lighter orange, one is a darker orange.
No, I'm sorry, the lighter, the yellow, whatever.
Yes, the ones at the left that jogs.
So you'd have to build a structure underneath that?
We would have to put footings in to secure the post, just as you would with any fence.
No, not the post, I mean, but people can't fall that, that's water right there right now, isn't it the groin?
No, that's sand, that's beach. The accumulation of sand in that corner and way it's... The accumulation of sand in that corner and way it's been suggested.
So the sand would be up at the same level as the steel groin at that point?
Yes.
I see. Okay.
Matt, to your point, as far as the limitations of the ordinary high watermark and the chosen relief, or in this case, the location for the fencing, once again, trying to accommodate the need in the community of what we've been responded to, or been asked for, I should say. Once again, the community overwhelmingly wanted to keep the dog park there. They wanted to keep it off as an off-leash dog park. We felt it was only prudent for us to make sure that people who would have to walk through a dog park can walk around a dog park safely, instead of having to walk through a dog park where there's dogs off-leash, where you might not feel comfortable to do so.
Okay.
So that's why we've allowed for this bypass to be achieved around the dog park in the location.
Okay. So the the proposal that we have, and the positioning and the placement of the dog beach at the southernmost end of Centennial Beach, and the size of the dog beach, and the location of the fence required to enclose that dog beach, it's your testimony that all of that stems from public comment, open houses, feedback that you've received as to what we're what is represented here? This is not anything other than, in your estimation, in your opinion, in your testimony, what you've heard from the public as to the proper placement, size, and access to a dog beach in Winnetka?
Staff was given direction by the Park Board based on just that, the public comment that was received over several years in regards to building up of this plan.
Okay. And I know and understand you guys are not authorized at this meeting to accept deviations of the proposal.
We're open to them, though.
You said that anything that was contemplated as a deviation to this would require to go back to the Park District Board for approval.
Correct.
So even if we were able to make some sort of a conciliatory offering tonight that you guys were interested in, it still requires you to leave this room, go meet with the Park District Board, contemplate it, surmise it, and then come back.
I do not have the authority to move forward without a vote from the board.
Okay.
The reason we're presenting this in this manner tonight is because we're acknowledging that you're a recommending body. We have the Plan Commission, we have the Designer Review Board, and we have the Village Board, Village Council, rather. And so at this posture, we're presenting two realistic options, and we suggest that we can accomplish, we absolutely can accomplish one or the other.
Got it. So the so thank you so much. So there is no reason other than the feedback that you've received that the dog beach could not be smaller, located elsewhere, or minimally pulled in further to the north to allow for greater access to the pedestrian bypass?
Here's the, I mean, that's that's in par in line with what we've heard, correct?
I mean, again, you've already done it. You've already moved it. So like, it can it can only get smaller. The space is there.
So I would like to talk about roughly the five-year set of conversations that pertain to the dog beach. Originally, in the lakefront master plan, the dog beach would completely go away, and it would be a dog park in another location. We looked at a bunch of other locations. We also had some alternate dog beach locations. The outcry from the people at those other locations, one location is Tower, which we jointly own with the village, it doesn't have as much space. There were objections there. Another location was Maple, there were objections there. In all of the conversations that we had about the dog beach at Centennial, it was felt that that was a neutral. While it was originally a temporary location, it became an amenity that was very much supported. Consequently, we felt that for this constituency that wanted both a dog beach and a dry dog park, we needed to absorb that feedback.
So.
And just in the same way, we would like to absorb the feedback from this board.
Sure.
And take it back to the Park Board and consider those. I'm happy to take back that feedback, much in the same way that we were happy to incorporate the feedback regarding having the dog beach stay at Centennial, albeit in a smaller footprint.
Yeah.
Because it is a neutral.
Sure. Obviously, what sets Winnetka apart from so many of the other communities that we would consider our neighbors is that we do have five beaches, where a lot of folks have one, maybe two, and one of those might be set aside for sailing or boating or any other activity. The concerns of having our one of our marquee beaches, by way of its size, dimension, history, and the like, be shared amongst our youngest citizens and our most our beloved pets, when there are alternatives to isolate those two important demographics, gives me gives me pause. And so I call into question, or my brain goes to minimally, how can I sleep at night that I have not put in place a situation where it is, you know, but one unfortunate day, when one unfortunate child takes, you know, a walk down this pathway and meets, you know, just an upset dog at that day, and we have a situation that could easily be avoided? I know that the Park District would not welcome that day either. The fence and where it's located is an entirely separate issue than safety, and I'm bringing it up because you've now mentioned that there are other potential spots where the dog beach could have gone and hasn't in this proposal. So I'm not asking you to contemplate that. This proposal will get voted on with the dog beach there, and rest assured. One last point, I guess, is access, and this goes to A, which is our standard as it relates to endanger the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and welfare. If the dog park if the dog park must be there, why is it not feasible or possible that a separate, even if you have the the gate where they're coming in and out to not allow for a stray dog to get loose, and then they get into the three-zoned, three-fenced area, why even allow for the passageway down to that area to be shared amongst strollers and children and dogs? Why wouldn't we create a separate stair on the southernmost end of the park that would allow for dog owners to bring their dogs directly down to the dog beach through that access? Why are we forcing our citizens to interact with leashed dogs, but still dogs all the same, on the pathway down to the beach?
I'll I'll address this to the entire board. The village made a legislative judgment, made a policy decision, that they want us to do the least amount of have the least impact on the steep slope zone. So we only want to have one route and the least amount of disturbance in the steep slope zone. We can't add stairs to the right, stairs to the left, stairs down the middle, and designate them for different purposes, because they will, you know, will have lots of interference with the steep slope zone.
But we've never had this case for consideration of a public safety, you know, offset towards that inclusion intrusion into the we've never had that.
We have to. We had to revise our plan in response to the steep slope ordinance. We have to live with the way the ordinance reads now, and the steep slope so steep slope ordinance requires us to minimize our impact on the steep slope zone and to protect the bluff. So it would be incompatible with that policy for us to have separate access ramps and stairs in multiple different places to separate pedestrians from the dogs. It's our testimony that there are places all over the community on an everyday basis that dogs and people coexist peacefully and happily. It is a great exception to the rule where there are where dogs and people don't coexist peacefully, and.
By design? By design? Sure, you can run into a dog on a sidewalk. By design, come play and swim with your dogs at this beach, come bring your children to swim and play at the same beach. By design. You've seen that elsewhere?
I would tell you that the Park District staff are professionals. They they work in parks and recreation for a living. They have college degrees in parks and recreation. They have worked with their peers in other park districts. They have experience in the park and recreation field cumulatively for decades. They are the experts, and they have evaluated the plan and come to a professional judgment that this is a safe plan that will accommodate the needs of the community. And personally, I respect their decision, because I know the background they have and the education they have and the experience they have. And so the plan is being presented to you by the professionals from the Park District in light of all of their years of experience, and I, for myself, I have to rely upon that experience and that expertise over some possible speculation about whether or not there could be a dog bite here or anywhere else in the community.
Anyone else have questions? I know we've got some public comment we need to hear as well. Okay. Team, thank you very much. Really appreciate the presentation. Obviously, we're processing it all in real time. Okay, we are going to we're going to open this up to public comment. Here's how I'd like to handle this. If you are, we're gonna we're gonna implement a time a time block here, three minutes per public comment. We're gonna start at the front and work our way to the back. Please, for the benefit of everybody here, if your comments are reductive of something that's already been said, or you have already said in a prior meeting, it's in the record, it's part of the part of the public testimony, public comment, part of the public record, please spare everybody the same thing said anew from a different day. But with that said, if you have particular public comments you'd like to provide, we'll call you forward now. Anyone in the first row? I would presume not. Anybody in the second row? Please come forward. Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mary Garrison, 350 Ridge Avenue. It's been quite a discussion, but I still want to thank you for your diligence in reviewing the current plan regarding Centennial proposed renovation. The special use permit, I have a question. Apparently, the village staff, as well as the Winnetka Park District staff, have searched for a copy of the original special use permit, referred to as an SUP. The Park District claims that this SUP exists somewhere. At this time, it appears that no one has been able to locate this permit. The Park District is asking that the existing SUP be adjusted for an update. If you don't have a copy of the previous SUP, how can the zoning board adjust the SUP? If there is not an existing SUP, it appears that you should deny the Winnetka Park District request. Secondly, if you believe it is unsafe for dogs and people to share the same beach space, please deny the Park District's request. Thirdly, if you determine that the proposed massive breakwater that the Park District calls a pier endangers the public, particularly our youth, you should, and please do, deny the Park District request. I believe that ADA is a very important factor to be considered when reviewing the Winnetka Park District's plan for Centennial. The existing proposal for the ADA access is dangerous for the challenged, the young and the elderly, sharing access to the beach with dogs eager to get to the beach. The users in strollers, wheelchairs, or walkers are in a potentially dangerous space. It appears this proposed platform ramp is an accident waiting to happen. ADA access is necessary, and it is mandatory, but the access must be a safe access. Please consider denying the proposed ADA platform ramp design. Safety is a must. If you, as a zoning board, believe that Elder Beach, a favorite neighborhood swimming spot that has been closed for four seasons, should be part of the proposed Centennial plan, then please deny the Winnetka Park District's current request for Centennial. You, the zoning board, have the authority to deny this proposed plan for the sake of Winnetka's health, safety, and welfare. And again, I thank you for your time commitment. This is a big project, and your acceptance or denial is very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your public comment. I will note for the record again.
I didn't go three minutes. I might have to lend my friends.
You hit you hit two minutes and 58 seconds. It was really impressive. I'll just note for the record, we are a recommending body. We are not approving or denying tonight's proposal, just recommending. Anybody else in the second row? Please come forward.
My name is Kim Marsh, and I've been asked to read Willie Franzen's note. He lives at 232 Sheridan Road. He thinks that the Winnetka Park District is presenting their plans for the ADA ADA access at Centennial Park and Beach in bad faith. Here are the reasons why. Elder Park Beach is currently ADA accessible. It certainly has its flaws, mostly the steep hill, but it does offer wheeled access to the pier and beach, along with a handicap parking spot at beach level. The Park District has kept this access closed for four years. They only seem to prioritize ADA access when it is convenient and aligns with their greater vision. Keeping Elder closed so long is inexcusable, but I think it's also inexcusable to point to Elder when people bring up parking concerns, but to ignore Elder when we are talking about accessibility. The Winnetka Park District shot down the idea of a lift because lifts are typically designed for low-volume individual use, which can lead to wait times. It sounds like they expect this to be a medium-to-high-volume access, yet Centennial Park has a handful of parking spots and one handicap parking spot. It's hard to understand how a lift would be a bottleneck when there is only parking for one handicapped accessible vehicle and very little parking overall. Basically, they are asking for a variance because of an increase in intensity of use, but then they claim that the same increase in intensity of use is irrelevant when it comes to parking congestion and safety. Additionally, the parking lot is a terrible situation for someone dropping off a person in a wheelchair or a carload of kids in a stroller. Any congestion in the Centennial lot immediately backs up onto Sheridan Road. The Winnetka Park District has overlooked the second-order effects of building a more accessible park. It will draw more people. This is a good thing, but it is only good if they properly plan for it throughout the entire project. They have waved away every parking safety and congestion concern, yet when it comes to the width of the ADA ramp they want to build to accommodate multiple users at once, including those using wheelchairs, walkers, canes, strollers, or scooters, ensuring inclusive access for all the visitors. Furthermore, patrons do not need to suspend their use while emergency responders use the ramp. There is sufficient breath so visitors can continue their ingress while without jeopardizing access by EMTs or police. The situation described above represents a massive increase in intensity of use. If this is the crux of the request for a variation, then all other parts of the project must also consider this level of use. I think it's abundantly clear that parking congestion and safety have not been considered for this level, this use level. I live across the street and never have never seen congestion on the current pathway at Centennial. If we expect future congestion on the pathway, then where else may we expect congestion?
Okay. We're gonna have to limit the public comment. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Please come forward.
I move forward because my husband's father was in surgery. So can I get Chuck Ivey? Ted?
You guys have asked really good questions tonight, and I want you to know that for four and a half years, we've been fighting this, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness, but there's some facts that you need to know, and this wasn't my original speech. I live three doors away. I got into this because I want the views, and I want them to pull this up and stretch it out. So you someone asked the lake level. The lake level's at 577 currently. The rocks are at 585.5. So you tell me if you can see people on the other side of the rocks? I don't think so. John's got the pier. This is the pier that we currently have. There are no rocks on either side. The the pier is 125 feet long. It serves its purpose, and it has a stormwater pipe under it. It serves its purpose, and it has a stormwater pipe under it. I want you to know that the pier that we're currently offered is 76 feet wide. But what wasn't told you, and it's driving me crazy, and I'm sorry if I'm so upset, the Elder Lane, he said, is their pier. There isn't a pier at Elder, but there's 90 feet of rocks horizontally, 76 feet here. It's 17 stories of rocks horizontally on the beach. So you need to know, if you make a decision, this is one project. This is our beach. This is our pier. This is what we want. One pier, one easy place to go out. We already have access going down. We don't want the bluff taken away. The Nutria parks at Elder year-round, specifically Summer School. I can't get a parking spot for people when I have a party at my house because you can't park at Elder and you can't park anywhere around Nutria. The parking survey was done in December. You've got to be kidding me. I want you to know, I FOIA'd the Park District to ask if this is an event space. If you looked at that picture, you looked like, it looked like you were going to combine Elder and Centennial. You need to ask them. Is this part of the master agreement? The master agreement that was structured forces the dogs to be on the south end for a $3 million donation and a 50-year giving away the rights to our park, a restrictive covenant. There are so many things that have happened in four and a half years. Coastas picks scared me to death of the 76 feet of rocks on either side of that. We had to look at Marquette and Door County. We aren't Marquette or Door County. We are Winnetka, and this is our beach, and it needs to be open. We need to keep our views. And this is the view of the structure of the rocks at 205 in September. They're much larger now, and you're talking about 176 feet of this. This is 30 feet, and it's 10 feet high, and it went even higher. So you, you need to, you need to know all the details. Ishbia's property, which is 205, with his pier, is going to allow accretion on our beach. You need to know one thing. Centennial is sunnier, 90 feet wide. Elder's 15 feet wide. The lake goes like this. So Elder's, Centennial's a much better beach. And Matthew, you asked. I'm telling you, Centennial is far better. And the stormwater pipe's going to go on the north end, and we're going to swim in the crap. So the people are going to swim in the crap.
We're going to need to limit your public comment. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Anyone else like to give a public comment?
I'm Rahila Anwar. I live at 1195 Tower Road. Thank you so much for your efforts. I have a significant issue with data being presented at the last minute to this board and to the public. It feels distrustful and dishonest to bring it to people who can't process it. I tried to get a lot of young parents to come this evening. They all have little kids and can't sit through three hours of presentation. It's a very difficult time for working parents, and I think the demographics of the people in this room, including me, show why people can't represent their interests. The data presented by the traffic expert was lacking credibility. Why would you build something and anticipate no new demand? Second, for two years, non-residents were not allowed to buy day passes from Thursday through Sunday, artificially underreporting the demand and usage. Third, if there isn't much, but this is my friend who had to leave, if there isn't much usage, why do we need more? We already have Tower and Maple. So you're going to consider taking away parking and then asking Nutria and then asking the same entity for their parking? How does that make sense? And then the last thing is suggesting that the way to resolve the access issue by asking a previously challenging neighbor is not tenable. My other comments, those came from the stuff that I learned today. My other comments related to this originally were, my key issues of concern, lack of fiscal discipline and prudence, no plan for ongoing maintenance, lack of accessibility to the beach and safety issues. If I built a slippery staircase at my home, I'd be required to put handrails throughout, and I'm limited to six feet of high fencing at each point. We, as residents, should be able to access the shoreline by law. Other gracious homeowners along our lake have not taken steps to obstruct our access. I already discussed the significant parking issues, but I would also consider that you look to Gilson to the south and use that as a comparison. It has a significantly larger footprint and horrible parking issues. And then the last thing is, somewhere in your 467 packet, you know, there's been so much divisiveness, but I read an article in which someone compared themselves to generous, virtually unrestricted gifts by the Nielsen's and the Steppens, to a litigious combative approach taken by a potential minor donor for this overpriced project. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Maggie Hayes, and I live on Orchard Lane, Winnetka. And Elder Beach used to be the go-to beach for me. Actually, I came tonight, and I'm only new at learning what's going on at Centennial. But I came tonight really to talk about safety and aesthetics, but I heard a few comments from our Park District saying, you know, how well-trained the lifeguards are. Well, first, I want to say, I brought my children to Elder Beach. I brought my grandchildren to Elder Beach, and now I've become a foster parent and Elder Beach hasn't been available for four years. So I've made my walk to, to Centennial. I don't have a dog, so I have, and I can't make access, I can't take access down to the beach because I'm not a dog owner. But, you know, a few years ago, I called Mr. Peterson and said, when are you going to open Elder? And he said, well, we have no plans for immediately. And I said, why can't we use Centennial? It's such a beautiful beach. Well, we don't have any lifeguard stands there, which made no sense to me at all. But now we're talking about, all the talk is about Centennial, and I don't actually get it. I mean, I want, personally, Elder Beach. I want to be able to put my foster children in a little wagon and walk to the beach and not have to drive up to Tower, and, which is what I'm doing now. But the thing is that, you know, when I hear about the lifeguards, well, we were at the beach this summer, many, many days, and, and one day, these are two- and three-year-olds and one seven-year-old, you know, playing in and out at the edge of the beach. And we were there a full half hour when the lifeguard came up and very timidly said to me that children shouldn't be in the water. And I said, why? Because there's a high bacteria count. Well, we'd already had a half hour of the high bacteria count, so I'm not counting on the lifeguards. They're young people. They do their best, but they're not adults. And unless they're going to be adults looking over the lifeguards, I don't think it makes sense to depend on the lifeguards. But talking about the aesthetics and the safety, for over 20 years, I was a day sailor on Lake Michigan, and it's a beautiful lake, but it's also a very frightening lake when the winds change suddenly and the currents change suddenly. And one time only, thank God, we lost control of the boat, and it was pushed ashore and the boat was swamped. It was the most frightening experience I'd ever had, and I'd been sailing for years at that point. The thing is, there weren't huge mounds of rocks. And, you know, I watched my grandchildren, who are now teens, going out in paddleboards, going out in jet skis, which I'm not a fan of. And, and I do wonder, and in sailboats, and I do wonder, how are they going to be able to control their, whatever it is they're sailing, without hitting a mound of rocks? And now we're talking about an even larger structure at Centennial. It just doesn't make any sense.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to cut off the public comment, but thank you very much for your public comment. Really appreciate it.
By the way, I think you've all asked excellent questions.
Well, thank, keep going. No, I'm just kidding. Anybody else in, are we in row two or row three? Row three. Why don't we just open it up? Anybody, anybody who's ready, come forward.
Susie Schreiber, Winnetka Park District resident and former commissioner. I'd like to take just one quick statement. I know that I was one commissioner present in the late 1980s when the bathroom was discussed at Centennial. I'm not going to take up any more time, but you have not heard the whole story, and I will just leave it at that. My concern tonight is adding on to the ADA. I had the opportunity this past two weeks to talk to two members of my extended family with the plans in front of them. And one is quadriplegic and one is legally blind, and both have had guide dogs. And their comments were, looking at the plans, when you go down that long, very wide ramp and then immediately make a turn to the left, I think, and are confined by fencing and a narrower path, and you're elevated about eight feet above the sand. A, if you have a guide dog and you're legally blind, you can't see the other children in the strollers and people like that, or the other dog that, as you indicated, might be having a bit of a nasty day as opposed to a friendly day. And that would be very uncomfortable, and they would prefer to go to Tower. They would not want to have anything to do with taking their dog or themselves down there. And with the, the sense of those with sight but who are quadriplegic and have guide dogs or are using segways or whatever it is that they happen to use, they definitely don't want to be eight feet above. They want to come down and have a passive beach that they can see and go to, just like at, at Tower Road. And they also indicated that we seem to have a lot of active parks, Lloyd and Tower and Maple, but that it's really nice to find a passive park where it's not overencumbered by piers and structures and impediments. And the last thing that I would also like to say tonight regards the in-lake hazards that are currently present off of the Centennial shoreline. And again, from history, I would say that those are probably mostly structures from the old TB sanitarium. And that when we took a certain amount of the debris out in the early 1980s, 1990s, we knew that there was more stuff there, and it can easily be done. It is not a very difficult thing. And when you have storms on Lake Michigan, Superstorm Sandy, stuff blows in. You even have your water lines going into your villages lifted off the bottom of the lake, and you have to do emergency repairs and take out structures that blow in. It can be done. It has been done since 2010 to 2020. I can document knowledge, but please consider the ADA. Consider that the fact that you can get the impediments, the nearshore impediments out to make that beach safer for the users today, and then go ahead and do your plans. And thank you so much for your consideration and your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment. Anybody else?
Hi, Terence. So, you know, I've been interested in this whole lakeshore thing, like, for the last 16 years or more, ever since we moved here, and I noticed the slow, steady privatization of the entire lakeshore. And, you know, of course, there was the COVID times where the Park District engaged in unlawful, secret meetings with a private entity to do a land swap, and, you know, that was all kind of hidden from everyone. And I, I've come to the conclusion that this is a farce. This whole thing is a farce. You're right. Why put the animals before, before the humans? But that's not the goal. What is happening is, is that the human at 205 Sheridan is being put before everyone, and this plan accomplishes that. So I'm going to just address some of the things. Yeah, there are options for dog parks. There aren't just five. There are actually another six. There's Spruce, Elm, Oak, Cherry, Willow, and Fuller Lane. All public street ends, which all have 60-foot-wide, at least, lakefronts that can be used as dog parks. If you want to protect the beaches, then you should look north to Lake Illinois Beach State Park, where what they did and what has worked, as opposed to all the pictures you've seen of the failure of these shore perpendicular structures, is these out-in-the-lake, shore-parallel submerged artificial reefs. They effectively block wave action, they protect the beaches, and if you look at Illinois State Beach Park, that beach has been maintained for years now. Why doesn't the Park District consider something like that? The fence is not legal, according to this Animal Rabies Control Board. It should be, it has to be a fence. Breakwaters don't count, and it needs to be contiguous around the entire park. So there's no reason to approve a fence for a dog park that's going to be illegal based on rabies and control ordinance. And it's troubling that the Park District knows all this, and yet at the last meeting, they misrepresented statements from Animal and Rabies Control. They, they specifically did not give them authority for their plan. The misnaming of these breakwaters, you pointed out correctly, there are three quote-unquote "piers." If you want to call one a pier, they're all piers. But they're not. They're all large stone revetments going out into the lake, just like the owner of 205 Sheridan, who is building a patio on his shore-parallel breakwater. They're just doing this to give it a different name. And it's also troubling that we only compare ourselves with the more restrictive beaches to the north. We don't compare parking at Willow, Will Matt or Evanston, which are relatively speaking much more inclusive. And, and the pedestrian bypass whole thing is kind of crazy. So anyway, but anyway, well, that's about it. I just think it's a shame. You know, the reason there's been a, maybe a leveling off of the, I'm done, but the leveling off of the dog beach passes is because at least one other person like myself got a dog beach pass, so I can go to that place without having to scale the fence anymore. And it seems problematic that we reserve such a large swath of land for a small group of people and their dogs.
Thank you for your public comment.
I just wasn't intending to come up here and talk tonight, so I do promise to tell the truth. What I want to address here is, again, the pier and why is it there? And the reason for it is in the original application. Its primary purpose is to separate the swimming beach from the dog beach. It has really no other function other than having folks walk out as an amenity. And actually, Matthew Wright, the engineer, civil engineer for the park, back in April, he addressed Elder, talking about those two piers, and his statement was, actually, they're breakwaters. Those two breakwaters will not preserve the bluff, they will not retain sand. And in November of 2023, he addressed Centennial. And at that point, he stated, the pier had no practical engineering purpose. It was just there to separate people from swimmers. And that's it.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you. We got to stick together. I'm Chuck Dowding, 968 Elm Street. Thank you very much for allowing us to spend yet another night here discussing this project. The proposed 220-foot-long, 60-foot-wide rock groin structure violates two ordinances. First, 157808D is violated because a large groin exceeds that minimally necessary to protect Centennial Park bluff and beach. No rock groin is necessary at all there. The existing steel sheet pile wall, installed after the 1987 previous high-water event, protected Centennial bluff and beach during the 2019-2020 event. protected Centennial bluff and beach during the 2020 high-water event. Even the lakeward access stairs are still in use, indicating that the clay was not eroded underneath them as alleged by earlier this evening. Second, 157801 is violated because of the environmental harm and possible property damage caused by this large groin. And I'm going to get to how large it is in just a moment. It and its elder analog will trap large volumes of sand as it moves by lateral drift from the north to the south as shown on materials in the page 49 of the Agenda Pack on 14 October. Trapped sand is not available north of this large groin to replenish downdrift beaches to the south when their pre-construction sand is drifted away. Storm waves will now have a greater potential to break closer to and erode the southern beach bluffs because the beach sand is no longer present. Now, I want to just spend the next minute here explaining this graph that my friend has held up here. The top is a comparison supplied by the Winnetka Park District that compares in orange the Centennial from an earlier design, two bluff, two groin and middle rock wall with Lloyd. Lloyd is the light blue and the orange is the Elder Centennial complex. So if you take this black box and circumnavigate from Google or the similar photograph of the material at Lloyd's Beach, which is comparable in size, and move this black box down here to superimpose it where it would be put and built at this Elder Centennial location, you can estimate the amount of sand that will be trapped to the north. Notice how much sand is trapped to the north here, providing a huge beach north of that rock groin that will be built at Elder when it finally comes before you to be considered. Well, the same length rock groin at Centennial would do the same thing if that was only built itself. So that's the sand that gets trapped to the north, which keep the nice sand to the people to the south, and that will erode their beaches certainly in a five-to-10-year term before. Perhaps that sand can wrap around it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much for your public comment. And thank you for your volunteerism, helping with the poster. Any other members of the public wish to give comment tonight? Please come forward.
Hi. Is that okay?
Yes.
I have a procedural question first.
I'm sorry, yeah. Can we have your name, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Irene Smith, 37, 38-year resident of Winnetka. One of the people who had to leave sent me her speech that she would have presented. Plus, I have one of my own. Is that allowed?
No, it's not.
Okay. Then I'll just do mine.
Thank you.
Okay? That's kind of rude, but don't tell Kim, okay? I have three major concerns about the Winnetka Park District's request for a special use permit for Centennial Park and Beach. The first and most important of my concerns is the dangerous nature of the outrageously enormous pier the park wants to put into the water at Centennial Beach. I call this fear the pier. You've heard from others about the risks to swimmers, boaters, and anyone else who might visit the lake, so I won't repeat any of that. The second concern is the tremendous and unnecessary construction expense to build the Park District's over-engineered project. Science tells us that there are much better ways to protect our lake fronts than enormous breakwaters that you see when you look at Winnetka from the lake. I don't know if you had the opportunity to boat, but you'll see it. I hope you've had the opportunity to read the article I sent you from Bloomberg about the living breakwaters recently built off the southern tip of Staten Island, New York. The article is on page 412 of your packet. And I do have to say, you're amazing for reading a 466-page packet before this meeting, not to mention all the new stuff you got. But anyway. This article about living breakwaters. Living breakwaters are designed to slow current flowing along the shore, which allows sand to accumulate, restoring the beach and replenishing plant and animal habitat. The author describes the new reefs as looking like giant caterpillars resting offshore, somewhat like what we have in Waukegan. My third concern is the aesthetics of the Park District's plan. On page 255 of your packet, you'll see a beautiful photo taken by Phil Anquist from a position on a Centennial Park path, which looks out on the exact place where Monster Pier would be installed. The photo shows a quiet and beautiful beach. Why obliterate the view by packing in a huge, unnecessary breakwater? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. I'll also note your colleagues' comments. If you'd like to give them to staff, make sure that they're included into the public record.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here wish to give public comment? Please come forward.
Is this what we were producing for the episode?
No, we weren't. We had, looks like you might have found a friend.
So, Matt, I just want to make sure I understand because...
Can I have your name, please, for the record?
Vicky Apitoff. It was in my speech, but no, I had a question first. Angie Dahl, who's a former Park Board President, has sent something for me to read. Her husband just had surgery and she wasn't able to leave him tonight. I know in the past you were able to, so I told her I would read it. Am I able to read that for her?
No, again, out of an expediency of time, well, unless it's going to be your comment?
No, I have my own that I already wrote.
Yeah.
But she said because she can't come and because in the past two meetings you allowed it, she thought, especially since we weren't able to see anything from the Park Board in the last month, we had to respond on the fly to all the stuff that was presented to us.
Those comments can be given to staff and we'll make sure that they're provided.
I've never spoken before, so I feel like it would not be, you know, unreasonable to...
I understand that. If we allowed everybody who showed up to recapture time from prior meetings to speak, we'd have very long public comments. So I'm going to limit you to the three minutes to provide your comments. Your colleagues' comments can be provided to staff and they'll be provided to us after the fact. We can't accommodate everybody who wasn't able to make. It's, again, we have a duty here to hear the public comment.
Well, I know, but you set precedent already in the last two meetings by doing it, so people expected that to happen again tonight.
I understand, but that's what I did in the...
I mean, the Park Board was able to read stuff from their Park Board.
Park Board is the applicant. Public comment is open for those who are here to provide public comment. It's not to be a gathering bell for everybody.
But she's a former Park Board President.
She can make her comments available to the staff and they'll be included with the zoning board minutes. Or you can read those comments aloud.
Peggy, can you read them for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy's going to read them for me, then I'll read mine.
Okay. Mr. Root, you could probably take a break there for a second.
I feel like I need to start.
Yeah, sorry.
As a board...
Can I give your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Peggy Marte. I'm speaking for Angie Dahl.
Okay.
As a board, you have asked some very important questions that still have gone unanswered. At the very first meeting, you asked, "How do we know what is minimally necessary to protect the shoreline?" The reason you have not received an answer is because the Winnetka Park District never hired a coastal engineer to conduct this critical first step to assess shoreline protection needs. The standard practice of modeling and assessment for hydrodynamics, sediment, and water quality was eliminated, a practice that was implemented by Kenilworth Glenco Lake Forest as well as hundreds of other shoreline communities analyzing their needs for shoreline protection. Why would the Winnetka Park District skip this crucial step? Without it, your question cannot be answered. I am pretty sure the zoning board would not approve house plans without a licensed architect and completed zoning compliance worksheets, but this is exactly what the Winnetka Park District is asking you to do with this project. Think about it. Have you heard from a coastal engineer once during this entire process? All of your technical questions were answered by business administrators, lawyers, bureaucrats, and landscape architects, none of whom are professionally trained to opine on these issues. Many of the answers they gave were incorrect as identified by the multitude of letters and comments you have received in rebuttal. Do you know about the 2024 Illinois North Shore Coastal Resilience Plan? It was created with the input of state and local elected officials, university think tanks, environmental experts, and coastal scientists tasked with creating better solutions for shoreline protection along the North Shore. It contains the latest and best practices for all North Shore communities to follow. In their recommendations, they state, "Resilient solutions should not aim to continue hardening the shoreline as this only provides immediate relief to the problem while complicating public access to the shoreline and in some cases exacerbating the loss of recreational assets." For instance, shoreline hardening in combination with unmitigated lake bed downcutting eventually leads to the loss of shallow, littoral features, including beaches and associated aquatic habitat. Resilient solutions require long-term planning to effectively incorporate a holistic strategy that protects a stretch of shoreline, maintains or improves public access to the lake, and restores or creates habitat native to the region. Twelve key steps have been identified as critical to planning a coastal project. Many of these were not followed during the Elder Centennial planning. Number nine speaks directly to the zoning board concern for determination of minimally necessary requirements. Okay, number nine. Carry out coastal engineering analyses, including empirical, numerical, and/or physical modeling to develop preliminary design. Just like a house plan with architectural drawings, the Winnetka Park District has given you a plan with no foundation on which to build this design. You do not have the information you need to approve this request. Thank you on behalf of Angie Dahl.
Thank you for her public comment.
Sorry about that. She's never seen that before, so she did a really good job.
She did a great job.
Okay. Good evening, ZB, good evening. Thank you to the ZBA members for all of your service. My name is Vicky Apitoff. I have been advocating for over 20 years on behalf of Lake Michigan, with which we are all fortunate to share a boundary. However, with that gift comes great responsibility. For too long, we have treated our lake as an afterthought. Although many of our North Shore neighbors began introducing bluff and lake protections in the early 80s, it took Winnetka over 40 years to catch up. We are late to the game in protecting our greatest natural asset, the source of our drinking water, and one of the primary reasons our property values are the highest in Illinois. It took the massive and unprecedented destruction of hundreds of trees, acres of bluff, crucial ecosystems, and public access along the shoreline to finally get our community to wake up and demand we put a halt to unnecessary and irreversible damage to our treasured beachfront. Like the hundreds of others who have been attending years of village, park, caucus, and other meetings sounding the alarm for the irreversible damage being proposed on our beachfronts, I hope the plethora of information you've been given about the serious flaws in the design will help you confidently deny this request. Several times, you have all expressed your frustration and concerns with the fact that the Elder Centennial project has not been presented to you in its entirety. You said the absence of a big-picture scenario is greatly hampering your ability to consider the pros and cons of this plan. Would you allow an architect to show you the first floor of a house plan now and bring back the second-floor plan after you've approved the first? So much is missing that it's needed for you to accurately and properly review this request, let alone approve it. Take a look at these before-and-after photos. Are these dangerous and unnatural structures something we want to encourage along our beachfront? This is what this person's view in our town looked like before this project was approved. This is what we're allowing to happen along our beachfront. This is unacceptable. Talk about commission property values. One of the most important things that you look at is a zoning board? Current coastal resilience best practices advised against these hardened armor structures along the beach. This WPD plan is almost 10 years old. It no longer reflects best practices, and in many cases, it goes against what is currently recommended for the Great Lakes. You can currently walk, and I'm sorry, the Walgreens could not publish my other poster, they broke their printer, but here you can see, look at how tall that walkway is over the lake. I used to be able to walk along the shoreline, right along this beach, all the way across to the furthest northern point of Elder. Now, look what I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to look at this huge rusted piece of steel. I'm supposed to get up those massive stone, whatever they're called, they're not even ADA accessible, in slippery times when there's mold on them, when there's moss on them, get over that hill and then go on the park. This is what we're encouraging by allowing the Park District to put four more of those on our public beaches where I can now walk unimpeded. It's a beautiful, passive, nature-focused, and spiritual part of our park system. It was saved in the 60s by the residents of Winnetka for this very purpose of walking from end to end. Its approval from the IDNR states its use was not meant to be changed without express permission, which the Park District has never asked for or received.
Please, please wrap up.
If you allow this plan to go forward, the gorgeous views of the horizon will be blocked forever. The beautiful and quiet walk along the shoreline will be inaccessible. The shallow and safe swimming beach will be destroyed, and the negative cumulative effects of two massive construction projects side by side will be irreversible. These crucial issues speak to the heart...
Please wrap up.
This is my last sentence.
Wonderful.
Well, these crucial issues speak to the heart of your ZBA mission standards. The special use will not be substantially injurious to the use and enjoyment. It will not impede uses permitted by right and will not alter the essential character of the locality. Elder and Centennial are beautiful and vibrant beaches. They can be fully opened and operable by next swimming season without this plan. Winnetka can and should do so much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your public comment. Anybody else wish to give public comment? Please come forward.
I'll certainly try to beat Vicky's time by at least a minute and a half that she went over.
Can I have your name, please?
Mickey Archambeau, 40-year now resident of Winnetka. I want to address three things that came up tonight. I wasn't, hopefully not planning on speaking, but I wanted to address the parking for Kate. I wanted to address the search for other locations for a dog beach. And then I just want to have an overall for what you've all heard tonight. In terms of the parking, again, I've lived here for 40 years. I have never seen a protest in front of Centennial Beach, Elder Beach, Maple Beach, Tower Road Beach, or Lloyd Beach with banners saying, "No parking, no parking. You have to do something about parking." They've been there that long with no big issues about parking. I think it'd be a great thing if we do these beaches and people just really want to go to the beach. Great, we'll supply trolleys. It's an idea that came up in the past, when you have a trolley to go to the beach, you don't have to worry about parking. They'll pick you up at what used to be the post office space and distribute you at the beaches and then pick you up on the way back. What a great idea. You don't have to go all the way down to New Triria High School to park and schlep your stuff all the way there. It's, you know, even better than having to go to Ravine U. So in terms of the parking, it's like, okay, you have 12 spaces at Elder. You want to try to put more parking spaces, then this board needs to go in front of the public, not the Park Board, because that'll be hell to pay for people saying, "This is the best park in Winnetka," and you're going to add more asphalt to it? Good luck with that. And then therefore, Kate, what's your alternative? Close the beach, sell it? Or say, "It is what it is." You have five alternatives to go to a beach. If the parking lot is full, go to the next lot. If that one's full, go to the next lot. And if it isn't, hopefully there'll be a trolley to take you down to the beach because there's such a demand. Because again, your alternative is, well, let's just close the new beach and sell it. So that addresses parking. Third, for the search for another dog beach, I was on the dog beach committee when I was on the Park Board, served with Colleen Root and several citizens. And there is one and only one other location for a dog beach, and it's at Tower Road. It is 200 feet of property that the village said, "If you want to use it, great." Guess what? It would have... And there is one and only one other location for a dog beach, and it's at Tower Road. It is 200 feet of property that the village said, "If you want to use it, great." Guess what? It would have exactly the same restrictions that you're talking about for Centennial Beach. It would have to be fenced. You're looking for a separate entrance. There'd be a point in time where people and dogs will be working in the entrance to get to the beach. It was looked at to say, and actually, it was a worse location than Centennial because the wave action at Tower Road Beach is extraordinarily much more than it is at Centennial. Village said, "Wait till we finish and repair the pier." Guess what? Hasn't been repaired yet since 2022. So you're still waiting for the pier to be repaired. So the wave action, the undertow, everything would make that a dangerous beach for dogs. And in terms of not having a dog beach, once again, as on a park board where 60 people came in with torches and pitchforks and wanted to have our hides and hang us out in the backyard, we're even entertaining the thought of taking away their dog beach. 380-something licenses, they may have gone up a couple, may have gone down a couple, still around 380. It was a concession to that group to say, "Okay, we will keep the dog beach." Does everybody like the idea? No. It was a decision that was made.
Please wrap up.
Sorry, I'll wrap up. Thanks. And one, in terms of safety for people and dogs, Memorial Day, Fourth of July. Go look at the parades. What do you see up and down the streets? People with dogs on their leashes and people around with little kids. Everyone has dogs. It's not a dog fight. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your public comment. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it, well, no. We'll close public comment before bringing it in for deliberation, though I will provide to the applicant an opportunity if they'd like to come forward and speak to address any of the public comment they heard tonight. No obligation to do so.
I wanted to close with some comments. The village undertook, when they started these, to study these ordinances, two study sessions, January 10th, 2023, and September 12th, 2023. And directly from the January 10th, 2023 study session, Soren Hall, the senior project manager at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, described at minute marker 11:05 the evolution of protective elements from first-generation steel groins to revetment to current best practices of partial or total stone breakwaters. At minute 35:30, that without protection, the shoreline could erode an additional mile inland, and that at 38:05, there is an inherent need for shoreline protection regardless of high or low water levels. Steve Altman of the IDNR, in that same presentation on January 10th, stated at minute marker 49:24 that Illinois has 63 miles of lakefront, 83% of it is armored with groins, revetment, or partial or total stone breakwaters. Finally, on September 12th, 2023, Caleb Barth, the associate principal of Baird Associates, the coastal engineers that the village has selected, described at minute 18:17 that landward erosion 50 years ago was 8 to 10 inches per year, but that human development, i.e. armoring the shoreline, revetment, breakwaters, et cetera, had significantly slowed that erosion. And that at minute 23:07, that the original structures, the ones that were the older iterations of the current rubble mound breakwaters, were not designed for the deeper, more powerful waves that result from lakebed downcutting and cause further erosion. Those are the village's excellent attempts to bring us all together to the same point in our education about coastal maintenance, bluff maintenance, and protection. The second thing I wanted to say is that elements in good repair are safer. Elements that are well-designed are safer. Elements that are in the open air, open pathways, are more inclusive, and they're also safer. You can move out of the way with a dog if you see someone else with greater need coming. I think that we've heard a lot of testimony from people who maybe have not seen the September 10th or the September 12th or the January 10th presentations that were designed to bring us all together to one place, and there are some different agendas operating. And that's fine. I mean, I'm open to all of this input. I will take it all back to my board. But I would like you to understand that there are some standards that the village has supported in this process, and the village has undertaken to educate people and bring us all together on this, and they're being ignored or distorted in some of the comments that you've heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody as we bring this in for deliberation, both the applicant and the engaged public. This is what makes us a great village, an ability to come forward and share your thoughts. We are just a recommending body, as everybody knows. There's many more steps procedurally before this process comes to an end. But your coming out and spending the time now as we approach 10 o'clock, it's well noted, and we appreciate your participation. Okay, I will close. Public comment, bring this in officially for deliberation. Guys, we have, some of these issues are already well-settled in our heads. Some of it on the basis of some new information that's been provided tonight. Some of it really is hours old in terms of our ability to process and contextualize that against the standards that we have to consider in a way. I would like to make it our mandate to try and come up with, you know, some definitive decisions tonight, whether we're going to continue this to a date certain in the future, whether or not we are going to move this out of our advisory board with a recommendation, whether it's in support or against. We do have the special use permit standards that we've been talking largely about tonight, but we haven't spent a lot of time talking about, but I'll recall everybody to, you know, sort of recalibrate back to the November meeting, were the zoning variations on the fence and wall heights, as well as the steep slope exceptions that we had asked at that last meeting for the village attorney to prepare findings and recommendations on the basis of, that in my estimation and my review of those totality of comments were generally in support of the variations, the zoning variations on the fence and wall height and the steep slope exceptions. It was really the holdover of the special use permit and those particular standards as contemplated for this particular use. As we've said before, a beach is not a beach is not a beach, and we need to, even though there has been prior precedent for opting a special use permit for all of our beaches in the residential zoning districts, this determinative decision that we're making tonight on a recommendation for or against is where I would expect most of the comments from this group to lie. I do believe, not to tip my hand, but I do believe that these exceptions and variations can be divorced from the broader recommendation of this board. They need not go together hand in glove. We can potentially be talking about recommendations for or against with all three of these products. So that said, why don't we start? Is anybody interested in sort of generally kicking us off with their feelings as to whether or not they're ready to, they feel as though the evidence is warranted to move towards a recommendation on the special use permit for any and all of the testimony we've heard tonight in continuation of the prior meeting and continuation of the meeting before that, where people's heads are in terms of our standards on the special use? Or we can go from the back to the front if we want to check off on how people are feeling based on the findings and the recommendations from village attorney as it relates to the very, sorry, the fence and wall height and the steep slope. Either one's acceptable to me, but I, let's just, let's see where people are at.
I'm happy to kick us off.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to focus on the special use permits and the various standards surrounding that. The first one, having to do with public health and safety, special use must not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort morals, general welfare, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think that, in my view, the park district has addressed the issue of safety associated with the rock area that forms the basis for the pier. I don't find the concept of young lifeguards to necessarily ameliorate the problem that could come from swimmers up against those rocks. I also didn't hear anything more about the danger from those on the pier walking onto the rocks. So I really don't have a good feel that they've shown that these rock piers will be safe for our public when added. I also am concerned about even a comment that you made, Chairman Bradley, that, you know, you would restrict your children from such an area, which then ends up reducing the number of people that can enjoy the beach. I don't, didn't see other than a suggestion of signage at the last time that there would be an intention or a willingness to protect the public with anything special that I heard from the dangers that come from one of these piers. Moving on to another subject, I feel that the safety of the downward walk with children, with people with disabilities, with dogs on leashes, is an accident waiting to happen. It's a long stretch that those three different groups are going to be navigating at the same time. Yes, there's a confluence down at the bottom where they're going in different directions, but there's also the entire walk down. And I just think that whether it's a dog excited that takes the legs out from under somebody, or whether it's just a dog that becomes nervous with so much around, I just think it's a, it's not a safe environment to be designed in. I think there are other safety issues relating to the lack of parking and the number of cars that theoretically would be coming down into that circle and then trying to turn around and come back out. Whether they have parking or not, there's been nothing provided associated with people coming in to drop folks off beyond the current circle that's there, which is somewhat constricted and not really designed into this larger model, in my view. And there's only a mention of people walking along the sidewalk between the two if they are going to incorporate parking at Elder. And that is, so there's no enhancement of the ability for pedestrians to get from one side to the other. In short, I just don't think that the, I feel like the safety hasn't been addressed adequately. I also think that the ADA enhancements without having bathroom facilities, the idea that we're going to throw in a porta potty at the end is really not thinking through the entire plan. We've got a big ADA facility going down, but then we're really not providing the complete facility for either drop-off of ADA people, parking spaces. It was stated again, they're going to keep one parking space for ADA. And I think to kick the can down the road and say, "Let's see what we see," without doing some hardcore analysis, which I don't find the current traffic safety analysis, if you call it that, to be adequate, really provides any kind of a buffer on my concerns for safety. I also am not sure that the existence of a dog swimming beach next to the, or the dog beach next to the swimming beach is appropriate as a sanitary option. And also, I find that having this fencing up 365 days a year, we have, there's no provision for the situation when the, it starts icing over. We're still going to have dogs and people down there, which I think is an unsafe environment, especially as ice begins to build up on the perimeter. You have dogs climbing onto that area, and I think we can provide a better, safer place for our people and dogs in another location. So I'm not sure that the impact on the surrounding properties has also been taken into consideration, both from a traffic perspective as well as to say that because the individual at 2:05 is building a big house rumored to be the most expensive in Illinois, that that can be used as a benchmark for the fact that all of the other properties in the area will not be affected by this increase in the scale of the beach. And so, bottom line, most of those, they can affect, you know, obviously, the traffic considerations in number four overlapped from the safety comments that I made, so I'll, you know, just suggest that those are also relevant down there. So I, I think not adequate facilities as well from the bathroom perspective, even for those who are not ADA. I think to hearken back to 1985 and problems that may have arisen under totally different circumstances is an inadequate answer to the question of why don't we have facilities on top that match the expenditure in the facilities down at the bottom. So I'll stop there, but those are my reasons why I have grave reservations about approving this, and I would be a recommend to deny.
Thanks, Mark. Just if I could, as to the fence wall height zoning variation and the steep slope, setting apart the special use and your tendency towards a recommending against denial, did you have issues with those? Would you be otherwise recommending approval on those as isolated?
Yeah, I don't think we've resolved the fencing on the south end of the dog beach, and I think the dog beach itself creates problems with fences. And so I think I have concerns over just approving those for the purpose that they are being offered up to.
The dog beach is a special area.
Pardon me?
The dog beach is a special area.
The height that's being measured.
The height off of the boardwalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, and I've, you've heard me, you know, raise these before. I'm, I personally have a difficulty seeing that we should call the wall that holds the boardwalk a wall or a fence as defined by Winnetka to separate properties one from another, because the wall ends up being a means of holding up material behind it to create a, to create a boardwalk. So I'm not, I'm not personally jazzed about that either, so I'm, I'm not inclined.
And then the steep slope, just to...
The steep slope, again, you know, I think we kind of got a little tired and glossed, we didn't gloss over it, but we really didn't talk much about the steep slope. We've had some, some pretty, we've had some new ordinances put in place that are intended, in many cases, to mirror those that were already in place by other North Shore suburbs. And I think it's troubling that within months of putting those in place, that we're going to be comfortable with such design that actually flies in the face of those steep slope ordinances.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
So I will go backwards. I would be recommending in the, you're going to be amazed how fast I am. I will be recommending in the fence and wall height and the steep slope, steep slope exception, not recommending, though I want to put a little context to the special use permit. I think the use of the stone and the groin and the safety of something similar being Lloyd, I use all the beaches pretty much except Centennial. And I think the lifeguard situation at beaches like Maple is actually, they do a really good job, and I think the signage there is pretty good. So those are kind of my pros. Cons would be parking. I think it's a, we're short-sighted to not add some. It's parking similar to Maple and a beach that's about half, maybe even, or sorry, double the size of that beach. Also, with the parking, the drop-off, and it being ADA, I just don't feel like that whole traffic mass, if we are building a much greater beach, I want it to be that and for it to be used. So I think the parking is just, parking slash ADA drop-off and how that is all configured is not great, to say the least. Bathroom situation, I feel like it was a Band-Aid. We'll just put something temporary at the end of the walk. I don't want to go back to the eighties to what wasn't allowed then. I think there should be more thought to, but I do like the bathroom at the top as opposed to at the top. to at the beach level. And the south wall access with 205 address and the easement suggestion, I think is just kind of not clicking with me. I think we just pull the wall in and have better access to move over that wall. So I would not be recommending for a special use permit.
Kate, you want a breath, or do you want to just keep the train going?
I can keep going on a straight line. I largely fall in line with Mr. Haller's comments. I, I'm not going to go back over the special use permit stuff, because I think that it's well-trod path at this point. I don't have as much of a problem with the fence and wall height, except that I don't think that it's, I don't feel like I've got a full understanding of why it's necessary to be as high as it is. In terms of the steep slope zoning exceptions, I feel like the, you know, in particular, I'm going out of order, but the outcropping stone steps exceeding five feet in width, you know, they're six feet now as proposed, I don't feel that that is necessary for what the amount that is there and what it is anticipated to provide. The mid bluff paper walkway and seating area, you know, exceeding the five feet in width, I don't have as much of a problem with, but I feel like it's, in looking at things in the totality, you know, and considering that the steep slope is an area that needs to be protected, I don't know that, you know, these, you know, paper cuts along the way are really going to be supportive of long-term holding up, literally and figuratively, our slope. So again, you know, for me, I would be in favor of denial.
Okay. Lynn, member of the...
Right, so on the variations, I'm fine with the three variations, and then the exceptions, I'm still sticking to, I'm good with the exceptions, except for the stone steps, because I'm not, I'm sticking to my guns that I don't understand why they need to be six, other than they could be 1926. So I don't approve the stone steps, the other two are, I'm fine with. And on the special use, I do appreciate that the applicant came prepared today with better explanations and answers and justifications. I felt like that was more helpful than November. They came with statements and evidence, and that actually answered our questions. It was late coming, but it was the holiday and I...
Can you get your mic? I'm sorry.
And then, so I feel like they addressed a lot of my issues, which were parking. I don't, I guess this might even be a question for the attorney, but if we were to approve it today, and then when they bring, or, you know, if it gets approved, whatever, and then when they bring Elder, we now realize there's not enough parking for these two beaches, could we then stipulate on the Elder project that we have more parking for the Centennial project? Because I feel like, for parking anyway, we keep talking about these together, but when that application comes up, can we still talk about them together?
The board's going to have to make that decision when it gets to the board about how to deal with the separation of the Centennial and Elder.
Would they only be able to, when they come with Elder, and we say, oh, the 87 spots between the two beaches really isn't enough for the two beaches, and we say you need 20 more spots, would they only be able to put them on Elder?
It would depend what the approvals were by the village council. The village council could stipulate what would happen in that situation, where it would come from, and how many.
Okay, so where, so as far as parking is concerned, you know, I'm okay with the wait and see. I do have, I don't buy the applicant's explanation that there's not going to be an intensity of use, or they don't really foresee one, because we're going from a dog beach to now a dog and swimming beach. So that by nature is an intensity of, increase in intensity of use. But I would be okay with the wait and see approach, because that's, you know, if that's something that could be addressed at Elder, I'd be okay with that, when the Elder project comes up. Because right now, nobody's using Elder anyway. As far as the safety and the pier and all of that, I still, I, again, appreciate the applicant's, the statement from the engineer about why we need the pier and the coastal erosion and the breakwater and the purpose of the breakwater. And I am certainly not a coastal engineer, and I'm not even sure of all the vocabulary that they're talking about, but I have to rely on that as their expert. And so while I understand that, I'm not sure I can wrap my head around the idea of using, if that breakwater is necessary for the coastal erosion, I'm not sure it's the best place to put a swimming beach. And so I'm not sure that those two go hand in hand. I do like the idea of a swimming zone, but I don't feel like they've done enough to say those swimmers will be kept from those rocks. And as somebody who paddleboards at Lloyd, plenty of times, I've come darn close to those rocks. And through all the paddling in the world, if your current is pushing you towards the rocks, there's not much you can do about it, and it's scary. So I don't know that swimming and rocks go together. So either they need to do something to really delineate the swimmers from the rocks somehow with, I don't know, the swim lane things or whatever, or don't put, appear next to a swimming beach. I don't know that that's an issue I have. And the dog beach fence, I don't like the idea of the easement. I find that, as a real estate attorney, I don't have a lot of faith in those easements. There's a lot of things that could go wrong there. So I would prefer the fence to be moved in significantly to allow that. There's other safety issues with the people and the dogs, but that is probably, in terms of all of this, lesser down the pile for me, but these are my big issues with the special use, that while we're getting there on some of these issues, I just, I'm not sure, particularly with the pier, that I'm there yet. So I'm a no on the, that, for safety reasons, for the safety standard. Oh, one more thing, in terms of injuring other people's property, I'm also not sure how that breakwater will not injure people down the lake with their erosion issues. We're hogging all the sand when we build these, again, I don't know the vocabulary, but something about a littoral, something. So I worry what effect that will have down, you know, south down the lake. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Todd?
I don't probably need to repeat the two and three. I think I agree with most of the comments. I don't think I have as much of an issue of people and dogs mixing. I think my comments have been consistent about parking. I think if we want to expand that significantly, the room fills up with a couple thousand people complaining, and I, you know, I seem in the minority on this opinion, but pretty comfortable with the parking as it is. I like the land banking idea.
I think so.
I thought that was a relatively novel way to handle it. I think that actually measuring it, whether it's summer 25 or 20, summer 27, I mean, I'm guessing that they had, you know, pretty good stats on usage and stubs, you know, to look at. And so I don't think there's any bulletproof, you know, study you can do on those things. And then Lynn mentioned, you know, the easement and the fence, it just seems a little odd, but then again, the size of the dog beach seemed a little odd, but, you know, I'm not trying to play the landscaper on that one, or the architect on that one, rather. The bathroom, I thought it made sense at the top as well, it's seasonal, feels like they've got, you know, decent thoughts around that if need be. And so on the special use, I mean, I marked 1A and 1E, which everyone's talked about. 1E was parking. Again, I'm comfortable with it. 1A, safety, I don't know if it's like group think, but you're all scaring me a little bit. Again, I sort of trust extensive bodies of work and studies and years of feedback and public opinion, so much so that like this public swimming pool keeps coming up every 15 years or something until people freak out about that, and that goes away for a bit. So again, something has to be done to this beach, something has to be done to multiple beaches, and not everyone's going to be happy, but I think that, you know, it's easy to kick a can, because there's, you know, no one's ever going to be totally happy, there's no great answer. The pier design and scale in and of itself stood out to me as a little out of place all along. But again, I, you know, I'm not a coastal engineer nor coastal architect. So in some sense, I was really hoping for you guys to be a little more lighthearted in your comments and want to punt this to other governing bodies. But seeing that's not the case, I've laid out the fact that I'm perhaps...
I'm down.
No, but I'm okay with two and three. One is definitely a question mark, but I don't know where that line lands with us and where we should let others sort of start up mining, so.
Okay, so just to, I'm getting, just to recap from a counting perspective, two and three meaning the zoning and the steep slope exceptions, right? Yeah, okay. Last but not least?
Yeah, great. It's great going last, because...
Well, I'm going to go.
I can second to last to refer to everybody else's helpful comments. So I'm a no on the special use permit for the reasons of standard A, with respect to safety, standard, the erosion one, which I would say is C, and the parking with E. I'm not necessarily in favor of adding more parking, I just can't reconcile the increased intensity of the property with the tricky parking situation. You know, if Elder were never to be reopened, I'd be completely fine with using Elder. If, you know, a lettuce entertainment restaurant is going in at Elder Beach, we're going to need more parking, and so then I would want more at Maple, or a different plan for, excuse me, more at Centennial and a different plan for Centennial perhaps, if we didn't want to expand parking. So that's where I land on special use. In terms of the zoning, I'm okay with the wall height. In terms of the steep slope zoning exceptions, I'm actually okay with the outcropping exceeding five feet, as well as the reconfigured mid bluff paper walkway, only because it's just a foot, and I can make peace with that. I still, dating back to prior meetings, not a fan of the 10-foot wide concrete ramp. I prefer to see that stay in the five to six-foot range and, you know, and provide a lift if needed for ADA purposes. I could even see a scenario where you just kept two staircases that were five feet wide and had a lift, and that way you're not, you know, paving over the bluff to the same degree, and you're able to keep the dogs and the kids and everyone else separate.
For my part, starting from the backwards to the front, I have no problem with the steep slope exceptions here. Those were, while they're new, and these are, you know, some first impressions on it, you know, I think those were largely designed and built for the residential uses, residential contemplated uses in this regard. Less worried than any others might be about the particular width, six against five, 10 against six. I think that the applicant did a good enough job of explaining why those deviations were there. Again, inasmuch as, you know, we live and die on the bigger issues, you know, an outcropping stone step of six feet versus five, yeah, there's no like obvious, oh, it must be there, but at the same time, it's really not determinative of anything. So I'm behind accepting or recommending approval on the steep slope exceptions. Likewise, on the fence and wall heights, as was explained to us by staff, you know, those are, those are a function of, you know, the point in which, you know, they're measuring the heightest to the ground. This is not something that, you know, looms large over all the project that needed to be at, you know, at its most severe point, which the applicant noted, which was setting off the largest of the variances. Those are, again, fence heights and wall heights that are being applied in a residential setting. So again, you need to sort of put on your reality hat as to what we're actually talking about here. So willing to recommend approval on those two as it relates to the special use permit. The biggest challenges of coming into tonight were, as everyone said, the pier, the safety that it creates, as the attractive nuisance that it will be. The dog beach, its placement, the fence then thus required on the southernmost end of the park, creating a very troublesome and narrow access point for our citizenry to get access to the public lands that are available to them. I just find and believe that there are alternatives that exist that would mitigate, if not completely eliminate, those concerns that are called in by this current proposal. I was pleasantly surprised, although again, shocked to see that all of a sudden there were sufficient evidence put forward on the parking issue. If that study had been conducted months ago, you know, as it probably ought to have been contemplated, I think I never would have, you know, had issue with the parking. Some of the public comment about, you know, look, this is what we have, we've got parking, you know, you come to a beach, you know, you're not guaranteed a spot. If it's a beautiful day, there's going to be less spots. If it's a cloudy day, there's not going to be, there might be more spots. So how people use the beaches and, you know, moving to other beaches to get access to it, we're never going to sort of hit it pitch perfect that everyone's going to have, you know, a spot dependent upon the beach. I do think it will be more traffic there. I think 11 spots is, you know, certainly outrageous for the usage that'll be contemplated there when you're inviting this beautiful new, this beautiful new space and asking people to park away from it in order to get access to it. I think we'll have a lot of frustrated residents if we did that. But, you know, it's unique compared to other special uses, where you might have the parking issue if it was, you know, a school or some other dedicated use. You'd want to sort of treat it as one of one. We have other beaches in the area, and again, I was less driven by the parking issues. I continue to believe that A and B, the special use will be substantially injurious to the use and enjoyment in the immediate vicinity by right, which would be the access to the shoreline from, you know, participation of our citizens to walk the public beaches as allowed to them. And then certainly the pier and the dogs as it relates to the public health and safety, which has been said by everybody plenty of times. If the rock wall, if the pier is designed as their new, which again is minutes old in my hand, hours old, you know, the design statement here is all about its utility to, you know, present against erosion, then we don't need to create the width that's there to create the pier for access and have, you know, essentially invite our citizenry out into the edges of those, those designed structures to protect our beaches. They don't have to be places of enjoyment or serenity. So if they were to be able to come up with something, which again, I'm not all those things that everyone says they're not as well, you know, create the rock wall, create the break wall, but, you know, have it not be navigable by humans, you know, partly my concern about what our youngest citizens are doing at the outer edges of that become lessened, because they're not going to be able to get out there. At any event, we are just a recommending body, and I think overwhelmingly, we're a recommending body of one singular voice right now, which is recommending against approval. If we were to entertain a motion, that is, we have, we have...
Do the variation exceptions first?
Yeah.
Because this is everybody's got.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So as I said at the outset, we can separate the approvals, again, because we're just a recommending body, so inasmuch what I'm hearing is, we're going to be recommending against approval on the special use, but there may be sufficient numbers to recommend against approval on the special use, but there may be sufficient numbers to recommend approval of the variances and exceptions as a collective group.
Let me make one point. On the, the findings and recommendations for the variations and exceptions, those, the recommendation is not standalone. It's, it's a recommendation in favor, but only subject to the ultimate approval of the special use. So there won't be, they won't, the applicant won't have the right to have a height anywhere on the property. It will only be in the context of a special use if it should be granted.
Okay, got it. Does that make sense to everybody? So it would be a motion to recommend approval-
So we need, on that, we need a motion to adopt the findings and recommendations of the Village of Wenetka Zoning Board of Appeals that were included in your packet regarding the variations and exceptions.
Okay. Would I, does it?
I'm sorry, I need-
There's, there's a packet that was included in our aerials, it's on page-
Page 20?
Page 20, attachment A2. It's a finding and recommendations for the Village of Wenetka Zoning Board of Appeals.
I move to accept the findings of-
Record-
Findings of-
Findings of recommendation as found on page 20 of our packet.
That's Member Hanley. Is that, is that an acceptable motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do I have a rec, do I have a second?
Second.
It's Member Nielsen. Roll call vote, please.
That would be me.
Always.
It's 10:30. Member Haller. Member Nielsen? Member Cassel McNally?
No.
Member Hanley?
Yes, but I'd like to note for the record that I do not approve of the steep slope steps.
That's fine. On the exception.
On the exceptions.
That's fine.
Member Vender? Member Leister?
No.
Chair Bradley?
Yes, but I don't think we, do we have it then? Four to three? Okay, we have it.
Four to three.
Okay, then by my poor math, 10:30, the motion carries on the variations and exceptions. As to, sure, if you'd like to, that would be great.
So similarly, since we didn't know what your recommendation was going to be, we prepared a document that you've not seen yet that I'd like to hand out to read. It's not long, I promise, but we do need to have it adopted tonight.
So this-
This is a findings and recommendation of the Village of Wenetka Zoning Board of Appeals. It's, it's a recommendation of denial of the special use permit.
And one, was one also prepared in support of?
Yes.
Got it.
Not using that one.
Adam?
I move to adopt the-
Everyone?
Can I make the motion?
The only-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no.
So I'm with you, Lynn.
I mean, ultimately, this is a codification. Ultimately, this is a codification, hang on. This is a codification of the recommendation against approval here.
Right.
Specific to the special use.
It's just against special use.
Just list the standards and then at the end. The only thing I would change in the language is in paragraph eight, it said that the applicant did not provide any additional written evidence reports or written documentation in advance of the meeting. They did. At the time this was drafted, we didn't have it. So I would say written documentation until immediately before the meeting. Just make that one small change. Otherwise, I have no other changes to-
Okay.
All right, so can I make the motion?
Yes, although, can you read in it?
Yeah, I will. So I move to adopt the findings and recommendations as found and, as handed to me by the village attorney?
Yep.
And to recommend denial of the special use with the addition of the language in paragraph eight that states-
Written documentation, yep.
Until, that, to add at the end of the paragraph, until immediately-
Take out in advance of-
Until immediately.
Oh, to, to delete in advance of the meeting to, until, and replace with until immediately before the meeting.
Right.
Second.
Okay, that was Member Hanley, second by Member McNally, and that's a roll call vote.
Member Hanley. Hanley.
Oh, me? Yes.
Yeah. Member Cassel McNally?
Yes.
Member Vender?
Yes.
Member Nielsen?
Yes.
Member Leister?
Yes.
Member Haller?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes, by my count, the motion carries. Obviously, we are just a recommending body. There are further steps along the way through the plan commission, through the designer review board, and ultimately to the village council. It, I hope that the takeaway from tonight's meetings and the conclusion of the work provided is that the zoning board here does believe that there is a future project to be developed at the Centennial site. This proposal, for the reasons stated, does not satisfy the standards as we see it, but this is by no means the, the end of the journey for the Park District, and really do hope and wish the project moves swiftly towards some version of development, because that beach, which is a key asset of our, of our village, deserves some attention. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We're gonna, we're not done yet, but please feel free to leave quietly if you'd like to. I know we're, we're well beyond a normal reasonable hour. New business, January 13th, regular meeting, it's a quorum check. January 13th, everybody?
Yeah. Do we have anything?
We could, yes.
Oh, no, I'm not here.
Mike's out, I'm here. Everybody else, good?
That's not Martin Luther King.
Mark?
No.
Wait, so we-
Yes.
Okay.
So only Mike said he couldn't make it as of today.
Yeah.
Okay, agenda item seven is public comment. Any members of the public who wish to comment on any agenda item, not. Otherwise, on the agenda, you can come forward and speak now.
Nope, everyone's in bed.
All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and a motion to adjourn. Member McNally?
Second.
Second. Member Nielsen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.